Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Monday, July 11th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
President.
Trustee Luisey.
President.
Trustee Leo.
President.
Trustee Alfassi.
President.
Mayor Eklund. I am here tonight. I have no appointments to make tonight. The trolley presentation that's on our agenda has been put off until next month, and there are no public hearings tonight, so that's going to bring us to the adoption of minutes, the approval of the minutes of the June 6, 2016, meeting. Do I have a motion?
So must.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund. In favor. Any correspondences this month?
No, we do not.
Okay. That's gonna, that's moving along quick. That's going to bring us to the first opportunity to address the board on anything on our agenda, but tonight, I'm actually, I know there's some folks here who want to talk about the Brownfield cleanup site on Marbledale Road, so I'm going to first ask our, the village's environmental engineer to maybe give us a little update on that, and then we'll take any comments from the public.
Sure.
Mike Musso.
Yes, Mayor, members of the board, and members of the public, thanks for having me here again. Mike Musso from HDR, working on behalf of the village of Tuckahoe. I spoke at length at the June 6 meeting, I know some of you attended that, or maybe saw the video of that, going over a lot about status. For the most part, the status, as far as the New York State DEC is concerned, hasn't changed from last month. The DEC is, still has not issued a few documents that will lead to, you know, the advancement of their review of the Brownfields project. And of course, we're talking about the 3.2 acre site off of Marbledale Road that's, that's proposed for redevelopment, and proposed for remediation under the state Brownfields Cleanup Program, or the BCP. A few of the things that we're still waiting on, importantly, the first is a formal, final comment letter from the New York State DEC on the proposed remedial action work plan. So that is a work plan that's been put forth to the DEC and the DOH, that's the Department of Health, and the Department of Environmental Conservation, who are reviewing all the documents for this project, the initial sampling and investigation, and now we're down to a proposed cleanup plan of how the quarry could be addressed for safe redevelopment, protection of human health and the environment. A draft work plan was submitted by the applicant. They went through four different alternatives, they laid out the pros and cons of those. Of course, that's from the developer of the property putting that forth. That is, been reviewed by the public, there was a public comment period that ended in April. I provided comments on that, on behalf of the village, and from what I understand, the DEC has been meeting with the applicant reps, but there's no formal, final comment letter. So we are still waiting on that. I don't have a schedule exactly, I am, as you know, in regular contact with the DEC case manager on the project. That's really the first thing that's up, and I think the most critical, for the project. Following that, if DEC is inclined, they'll issue what's called a decision document, which is a formal record of decision that says, this is what the remedy is, and these are the concepts of it. So that's a very key thing, these, that will be publicly, publicly available, of course. With these two documents that I'm talking about, this final comment letter, and a future official decision document, we do know that those are being reviewed not only by the DEC case manager, the project manager, who you've heard from before, he's been down here a couple times, but also higher levels of the agencies. So, you know, it's obvious that there's been quite a bit of public and political participation on the project. So those two documents are still not finalized as of tonight, and I don't have an exact schedule on when those may come forth. What else? The DEC is also working on a, what's known as a responsiveness summary. Multiple comments were received from the public, as I think everybody's aware of. Under the Brownfields program, there is an obligation to respond to comments. From what I do understand from the DEC, you know, many of the comments were form letters, and almost synonymous, although from different people sending them in, so there will be some kind of responsiveness summary, and probably a Q and A, question and answer sheet, because some of the comments were very similar or identical, and the DEC feels it would be efficient to, you know, address those comments sort of in one shot. After those things are issued at some point, I believe the DEC will also put forth a fact sheet. Now, there's been a couple of those that have been published along the way. One was published during the remedial investigation, when the sampling was being done and the results were coming in. Soil, groundwater, soil gas and vapor were all tested on the site, as I think many of you are aware. But now we're at a pretty, approaching a very critical point in the project, obviously, when there is a remedy or a plan that's going to be selected, likely at some point in the near future. So that is a rough status check of what the DEC has been up to, and I guess the summary is, you know, we're anticipating these documents at some point, but there's, there's still review going on at those agents, at the agency.
And it's my understanding, it's really, because the public has actually been pretty outspoken, which is good, that it brought it to a, probably the highest level in the DEC and Department of Health, too, so it's really getting examined thoroughly.
Right, I agree, I agree.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this?
My name's Anthony Laurie, I've been a life member here of this community all my life, and presently, one of the fire commissioners of this community. I think I spoke, I don't think this gentleman was here, what's, David, I don't think you were here when I spoke, but...
Yeah, Mike, and I think you spoke in April.
Yes.
When the DEC was here. I was here.
Okay, I did mention that this, of the stuff that I dumped in there when I was working for different contractors, and at the, one end of that quarry was two bus companies at the time, and that bus company dumped everything in there that you could think of, tires, Prestone, battery acids, and there's even one old coach down there that he didn't need anymore, the man's long gone and probably in heaven someplace. The, the stuff that's in there, I mean, we're talking about what they could find, but as stuff was dumped, the stuff was coming up, every Tuesday and Thursday down there, the DPW managed burning. Everybody went down there that had burn up, burn up, burning stuff such as wood, decks, anything roofs, any construction outfit that wanted to, could dump on Tuesdays and Thursdays because it, they burned it. They had one village worker that used to watch the fires. TVs were dumped in there, they were burned on Tuesdays, regular TVs with big picture tubes, all the small tubes in there. You gentlemen who haven't been in this community, the only time I was out of this community was four years that I was in the service, and I think Mr. Marinella had mentioned the smell that used to come out of there. On damp days, you smelled it. There was many, many days that the fire department had to go there and put it out, because on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it rekindled, and it so would burn, and they used to pump water in there. And before they started dumping in there, it was nothing but a hole, like on Fisher Avenue. And every so often, as the rain came by, two, three months, it used to fill up, the fire department used to go there, just pump it out, pump it right down the street, right down Marbledale Road, that dirty, filthy water that was down there. I also worked in Burr's Welcome, as I mentioned. The stuff that we used to put in barrels, I don't even want to go into it, we used to put it on the truck, and the men just used to go down there, dump it. Pelham used to dump down there, the village of Pelham, the village of Bronxville, Tuckahoe, East Chester, all communities that were able to dump down there, had a good portion on there. When the incinerator was burning, all the cans used to go down there. Sometimes the cans used to even come with little baby flames, because they still weren't put out. People don't realize it, you know, you could do everything you want on paperwork, but you don't realize what's in that quarry. I know one of the, one of the zoning board members says, "That's way down at the bottom." Not so, not so. As that hole was filling up, the stuff was coming to the top. And as I say, the stuff that's in there, I wish you people were around here to see what went in there. The, the animals that they used to experiment on Burr's Welcome, they, like I said, they used to put them in brown barrels, seal them up tight, put them on the trucks, everything went in there, you name it, everything went in there. Anything you could think of went in there, as, as much as people's toenails went in there, everything went in there, and you, the stench that was in that area when that hole was opened up is unbelievable, you, people have no idea, I mean, you talk about rotten eggs, it's worse than that. The raccoons that were around here in this neighborhood were like cats and dogs, used to go all over, not just on Marbledale Road, I live on Waller Street, used to see the raccoons come there, because on one side of the quarry, one of the gentlemen that I worked for had a construction lot there, and he kept his stuff over there. You could not believe that the animals that were up there probably died from the stuff that they ate in there. So before this really gets started, I don't know how they're going to do it, whether they're going to put it on piles, or they're going to dig for foundation, but when that ground is, is opened up, there's air vacuums coming out of there with toxic waste. I just hope that everybody considers that, and listens to the people of Tuckahoe. Don't just brush us off because some contractor's going to come here and make money, or some lawyer's going to come here and make money. We're the people that's going to suffer, because we're here. I was born and raised here, I wasn't born in Bronxville, I wasn't born in Mount Vernon, I was born in Tuckahoe, New York, and someday, when the good Lord takes me, I hope he takes me where it says he's from Tuckahoe, USA. Thank you.
Thank you, thank, thank you. Anybody else?
I wrote a few notes here, so you're going to have to forgive me. And my eyesight's gone too now. I don't know what else is going to go, but in any event, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Marinella, if you'd just tell us your name and address.
I'm going to do that right now, Mayor. My name is Joseph R. Marinello Jr. I was born and raised in this village 85 years ago, and I was born, and then when I was born, I was born on Circuit Avenue, which actually was about 150 yards from where the quarry started. Then when I came home from the Korean War, Anthony served four, I served three and a half, when I came home, I put that duffel bag on, and you read my letter, I put that duffel bag on my right shoulder, got off the train, and when I walked down Clemmers Avenue, and I made that right-hand turn on Circuit, and I walked up Circuit, and I passed the garage that Anthony's talking about, the bus garage, where everybody dumped all that garbage in there, the smell almost knocked me down. Actually, literally, almost knocked me on the ground. Now, when I got home, in those days, nobody closed the doors, and my mother and father had no idea I was coming home. Well, I had five sisters, and that house was full of tags and hugs and et cetera, so when I had an opportunity, my father went down to Cellin and got me that homemade red wine, and we came up, and we sat, and I asked him, "What was going on?" He said, "They're filling the quarry." I said, "So what are you doing about it, Dad?" He says, "Well, to be honest with you, Rockwood or Paul," that was one of the neighbors, John Peraza was another one, my aunt Angelina DeBello was another one, they had 20 neighbors that got together and came down, not the particular village hall, but the old village hall, and they wanted to talk to the mayor and the elected trustees, and they wanted to know what they wanted to talk about. Soon as they mentioned the quarry, they were told to shut up. Could you imagine the mayor of this village telling my father, "My father," and everybody else in that group, "to shut up"? Mayor Eklund, 64 years, 64 years, and you know it, and there's no one in this village that doesn't know how much I went fighting that quarry for 64 years. Nothing was done, nothing. Not only you, and all the other mayors before you, nothing was done. None of the trustees, no one, did it lift a finger. Why? Why? You know why? Because of the money. It was a lot of money. Steve, don't shake your head, you weren't here, you don't know, it was the money. Let me put it this way, Steve, if you have a shed, and you hire two employees, and every truck that comes in, that truck has got to sign a slip, they were billed. They were billed by Woodbine and Traprock Corporation. Well, you're acknowledging that truth.
That's like every, that's like every dump, right?
Is that right?
Yes, yes.
Well, that's, that's news to me.
And, and by the way, this is 30, 40, 50 years ago.
So?
Okay, continue.
So, what's that got to do with the foul smells and, and the corruption that was going in this, on in this village? That was a privately owned dump.
Mr. Marinella, I think, I think what, what Mr. Alfassi is alluding to is that you're making, in your statement, I don't think you're doing this intentionally, but you're, you're alluding to the fact that there may be some implication upon any of the members of this board who really had nothing to do with this.
I'm not saying this particular board, I'm talking about...
There was that, there was that, you know, through the course of history, the mayors have done nothing.
Well, let me ask you something.
But I just want to say, let me finish, and then I'll let you finish, but, but I think that's really what he's saying, is there, there really is no continuity here. None of us had anything to do with that, that dump.
So now I'm, I'm dealing with...
Or what, or what happened? We're dealing with it the same way you are.
I hear you, but so now I'm dealing with the two lawyers, you and Steve.
Okay.
Now, he ran, as you know, when he first ran for office in this village, he ran, okay, with a win-win thing, and bragged about this hotel on Marbledale Road. He wouldn't deny that, it was done here when he was holding a forum. So he didn't know about the quarry, he had no idea what they dumped in that quarry, but it was a win-win, a win-win for him? Well, let me ask you a couple questions, and this is what bothers me the most. I'd like to talk to you, Steve, for a second also. After this, after this here quarry was contaminated and filled with all this filth and et cetera, when they filled that, guess where they wanted to go? Right where the mayor lives, behind his house. But we had a public meeting, it was held at the Republican headquarters on Marbledale Road, not too far from where he lives. We filled it up with about 250 residents of this village. When that mayor and that board got up on that stage, and wanted to explain what happened on Marbledale Road wouldn't happen there, they were booed, and they left. Sitting in my row, to the left of me, my right was my wife, to the left of me was Steve's mother. Steve's mother worked in Lawrence Hospital, if I remember right, dead set against filling that young place quarry. We stopped them, Steve, we stopped them, including your mother and all the residents. We got together, went down and stopped them, because they were going to do the same thing behind your house, Mr. Mayor, as they did behind my home.
They actually did start dumping there, if you remember.
I know, but then, do you know, right after that meeting, right after that meeting, the fence went back up, and they stopped, and they did it with no approval. That's how they operated, so I wanted Tom and Steve to know, years ago, that's how it was done. Wasn't done with, with a rule of the majority. Now, getting back to this, getting back to this situation that we have right now presently in the village, I just want you to know a little background about this hotel, where the dream came from. It came from Brooklyn. The dream for this hotel on this piece of property came from Brooklyn, and Steve knows what I'm talking about, he was the deputy mayor, and it was from, the mayor at the time, his name was John Fitzpatrick, and the other trustees that were on that board was a trustee who's overlooking this whole project, and sits on a planning board, Claire Gorman, crazy. She voted for the hotel. And the other one that voted for the hotel was Margaret Coleman, you remember her, Steve, right?
Where do you get Brooklyn, I don't understand the Brooklyn...
Brooklyn is where the former mayor came from, into this beautiful village.
Oh, okay.
You know, that's...
Got it, okay.
Oh, oh, he bragged about it a thousand times, about he left Brooklyn to come into this gorgeous village, and then this hotel dream of his came about. Okay, so then you had the only other trustee on that board, sitting with you, Deputy Mayor Eklund, was Louis McCourty, and he was against this hotel, and he was against any building on that area. So then you guys, your board and you people, decided to rezone that area, and this hotel dream came up. At the time the hotel dream came up, I asked the mayor, and I asked you, and anybody else sitting on that board, they thought this was going to be a tax haven for the Tuckahoe High School. Guess what? The hotel would be, not a tax haven for the Tuckahoe High School, it would be for East Chester High School, but they didn't even know. But I told them, because I lived on the border. So, that's where the dream came from, on this hotel, it's crazy. What I'd like you to do, if it's possible, Mayor, I'd like you to do, including the whole board, I'm not just talking to the mayor on this, I'd like you to take advantage of what the DEC said on the 14th of April, right in this room. Three questions were asked to the DEC. What would happen if the builder decides to walk away? And what would happen if there's no building? What would, what would happen? Well, right now, as you know, and you should all know, the southern part of that, that particular piece of property, and the northern part of that particular piece of property is already under the super fund. The state's going to clean it up, and they're going to do the testing. The only spot on that whole piece of property that's not under the super fund is the Brownfield. And what I'm asking you tonight, and you have the authority to do it, as elected trustees of this village, for the safety and welfare of the children in this village, and everyone else in this village, you, you could declare right now, no building on that site, kind of like a moratorium, and he could walk away, the state's going to come in, they're going to use the super fund monies, which is state monies, not the village monies, okay? It's state money, and they're going to do additional testing, and they're going to cap this piece of property, and keep us all safe. Because if they didn't do what they did, we wouldn't be here talking. The quarry would be like it is behind your house. But I don't have that availability, and that, and the other people in this village don't have that availability. Whatever you want to call it, Tom, whatever you want to call it, Steve, you could call it whatever you want, use whatever word you want, what I'm saying to you is there would be no way, no way in a million years, a private owner of that quarry could do what he did without the slap on the back from the elected trustees and the elected mayors of this village. You could say what you want, but that's a fact, because if the first mayor decided he didn't want it, because it wasn't good for the welfare and health of the community, he could have stopped it. And Woodbine and Traprock would have had to pack their bags and go to another place and contaminate it. Anthony Laurie's right, and I want to thank him, and I see in the back, he just walked up here, and that's Ed Stowe, another veteran, a lifelong resident. I went to school with Ed Stowe and his wife, right back there. And so, do me a favor, Steve, do me a favor, just do me a favor, do the right thing. You could stop it, legally, you have a right to stop this project, and you have a right to have the state come in and have the super fund clean up that site, and as the super fund person told you, his name was George Arandy, if you forgot his name, they told you that after four, five years, if you want to do some kind of other building or whatever, you could do it, but not right now, not on that site. We got too many children involved. And so, I know I belong, there are a lot of people here, and I want them to all speak too, but just take it in mind about how the hotel and the dream came about, and who was on that board. I hate to put you on the spot, Steve, but that's a fact. And you're, and you're big on this hotel, we all know that, we all know how big you are on this hotel, but let me tell you something, they had a hotel similar to this in Mamaroneck, and it failed, and it was in a better spot, the Marbledale Road. It ended up being a short-term spot for the homeless, prostitute haven, and a drug addiction haven. It took that village, that beautiful village of Mamaroneck, 21 years to get rid of that blight. Don't bring that blight to the village of Tuckahoe. I sleep here like Anthony, I don't sleep in Befford, I sleep here in the village. So do the right thing. You have an opportunity, that's why I came here, this is the first meeting I've attended, except for the DEC meeting, since my wife got so sick. I would never leave her to come to a board meeting, but now's the time for me to speak up and have you people do the right thing. Leo, Antonio, I'm begging you to do the right thing, and I think you will. Steve, I think you will too, you've got two beautiful young ladies, and I'm sure you're worried about their health, and you're worried about the Immaculate Conception. When they talk about the Waverly School, by the way, remember the Immaculate, that's only three blocks away from this. And the other last thing I want to say, Steve, to you, is this hotel is not going to be the wonders of the world, and it's not going to be all your tax haven that you think you're going to have, because you just paid 400 and some odd thousand dollars to a, to the apartments, am I right? On a grievance, on their taxes. You're just there, right?
The taxers here are...
Okay, and that's what's going to happen to this hotel. And the way that builder, the way that developer acted in this room, with the residents of this village attacking them, was uncalled for. I'm glad he didn't attack me that night. I'm glad he didn't attack me. But you know what? We don't need people like that in this village. They're here to make a buck, and you know it. And after they make their buck, they're going to say goodbye, and then we got to live with the rest of the problems, the rest of our lives. You know, take the right...
Thank you.
Yes, sir. He's a great guy, this Marianni, we all know him, right? Greatest food editor, greatest author.
And, and resident of Tuckahoe, which is much more...
Exactly, and the other thing you should remember...
Yes, sir.
Remember that other guy that was sitting next to your mother, his name was, he worked for the Daily News, John Undad, right? He was against that.
Yes, sir.
My name's David Quilly, I'm not a lifelong member, resident of Tuckahoe. I just moved here in May to 34 Chestnut Street. I spent a lifetime looking for a place like this, a lifetime. I'm also a veteran, I'm a United States Marine, and a United States Army veteran. I was in Lebanon in 1983, I'm an Iraq and Afghanistan vet, I have a 12-year-old son, I live right behind this place. I didn't, I had no idea, and this is the first time I've ever been to a town hall meeting, ever, in my life. I don't know the etiquette, I don't know what I'm supposed to do, I speak bluntly, I say what I mean, and I mean what I say. This makes no sense. Period. And for the life of me... And for the life of me, you know, I moved to this beautiful, this beautiful little village. I'm a working-class guy, I took off from work tonight, I work in the tunnels, in the subways in New York City. I'm around toxic things daily. I don't want to come home to more toxic things. I've got a 12-year-old son, a beautiful wife. We found this little, this beautiful little town of working-class guys just like me, vets just like me, American flags waving up and down the street. I fell in love immediately. I want to stay here. And I'm not gonna, if this thing goes up. Because as far as I'm concerned, it's an abomination. It makes no sense to me that you would put something, that it would, it would even be a question, why would you even think to do something on a, on a, in a location that is so obviously toxic? That anybody, a child, my 12-year-old son, knows it's toxic, knows what was there. My neighbor, Gus, told me what was put into the ground, into the ground there. And now they're talking about digging this up? That, that, that doesn't make any sense to me. It doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. And I don't know why, for the life of me, aside from money, anybody would want to do it. And listen, I'm all about making a dollar. I do what I do for money. It pays me well. It allows me to live here, because it's not cheap. It's not cheap anywhere, but it's not cheap in Westchester. I grew up in Brooklyn. I moved here because it's nice, it's quiet, it's peaceful. It's not toxic. I like that. I like that about this village. I can tell you this, tell you this with certainty, and I know myself, you don't know me now, but I guarantee you, you will. Sepher Fidelis, God bless America.
Yes, sir.
Yes, this is Albert Stern, 14 Westview. I have a question for the mayor. On May 13th, you wrote a letter to Basil Sagos, the acting commissioner of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and also Howard Zucker, the commissioner of the New York State Department of Health. You stated, contrary to Senator Latimer and Assemblywoman, Woman Palin's position, that you saw no need to have a full investigation of the entire Marbledale dump site. You stated that even though you had no scientific expertise in these matters, that you maintained that you had full faith in the Department of Environmental Conservation cleanup program. My question to you is, I am very mystified by the letter you sent to the state commissioners. Do you not think that you overstepped your jurisdiction and ignored the community with your opinion in that letter, given that the process is still unfolding and that you have acknowledged that you do not have any expertise in these matters?
And I'm glad you asked that question. First of all, the answer that I gave was based on fact-finding that I asked our environmental, because as I stated in that letter, I am certainly not an environmental expert or scientist at all. This man is. So I had him supply a, I think it was about a three-page answer to the original letter that was sent. And I don't understand why you would not have full faith in the DEC and Department of Health. I mean, that's, that's the agency that, that is in charge of these issues.
First of all, I don't have that complete faith that you do, but I would like to ask you a further question on this. Would you still write this letter in the light of the following two developments? Well, number one, over 290 systems, citizens have now signed petitions for a full and complete environmental study. They're also, also asking for a reversal of the planning board's extremely premature vote on the conditional negative declaration, which effectively ended any further investigation of the site. Number two, two prominent scientists have extensively studied the Marbledale site. This is why I don't have that confidence from the DEC. They are independent, they are not on the village payroll, they have concluded that there are enormous problems with the DEC proposals. They believe that the DEC remediation, and it is a remediation, as very little is actually going to be cleaned up, could actually pose additional health dangers to the residents.
You're making some assumptions here that we all understand what the DEC's final letter and their fact-finding is going to be on this issue. You know, that's one of the things that I've very, been very, very patient in waiting to get this response. And as I said at the beginning of this meeting, what I think is good is that the citizens have actually written the 290 letters to Albany, and I got copies of all those. I know that all the local elected officials around here did. And I, I know for sure that that has actually put this issue at the highest level and at the DEC and Department of Health. So, you know, I think we're all, that's, that's been our issue for the last, I don't know how many months, we're waiting for their decision and determination on this.
Well, again, bringing in someone else who's not on the payroll of the town of Tuckahoe, these two scientists have said, the DEC, what we've seen from the DEC so far, falls far short of what is needed for this toxic site.
Can I, can I interrupt there, though?
Well, okay.
But that's the reason why we brought somebody in who is on the payroll of Tuckahoe. Why is that, you're, you're kind of making it like that's a bad thing. I think it's a very good thing.
I think when you're on the payroll of the town of Tuckahoe, who wants the hotel, there's a definite conflict of interest, Mr. Mayor.
This, this man here, Mike Musso?
I don't know anything about Mike, Mike Musso. I do know, when you put him on the payroll of a hotel that you have...
It's not a hotel, he's not on the payroll for a hotel or for...
He's on, he's on the payroll of Tuckahoe, is that correct?
He has been hired by the village of Tuckahoe to examine...
I understand that. I'm just saying there's some other people, independent, who don't agree with him, and you did not take that into consideration. In light of this, I respectfully feel that you were out of bounds by writing that letter, Mr. Mayor. I believe you were rushing to judgment by favoring the developer and his hotel over the health and welfare concerns of many of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, actually, the woman behind, okay, you're next.
Sorry. Ladies first, ladies first, can I?
Good evening.
Hello.
My name's Sarah Derisse, I live at 61 Longview Drive in Eastchester, and I'm the co-president of the PTA at Waverly. Tonight, I wanted to go back to some of the testimony that we've had about the different things that were, that have been dumped. There's a recent article on CNN that I'd like to share with you. There was a, an alliance known as Project Tender, which are leaders of various disciplines that have recently come together in a consensus statement that says many of the chemicals found in everyday products can result in neurodevelopmental disorders, including autism and attention deficit disorder. I'm going to go through a couple of the chemicals that they're talking about in this, in this article. Obviously, I'm not going to read the whole thing because that would be, that's too much information for everybody to take in at once. So the, the everyday chemicals that they're talking about, the first one is organophosphate pesticides, which are a class of neurotoxic chemicals used as warfare agents in the 1930s. And today, they account for about half of all pesticides in the United States. They make their way into crops that we use as food sources, and any time a pesticide is sprayed on farms, we'll have a higher rate of exposure. These have been found to cause higher rates of attention deficit hyperactivity disorder in children. The next one are, I think I'm pronouncing this right, phthalates, the chemicals that soften plastics and help sense...
Phthalates.
Thank you, phthalates. To soften plastics and help sense and chemicals bind together. Exposure to these chemicals has been associated with lower IQ levels. They can be found in shampoos, conditioners, body sprays, hairsprays, perfumes, colognes, soap, nail polish, shower curtains, medical tubing, IV bags, vinyl flooring and wall coverings, food packagings and coatings on time-released pharmaceuticals. The next one, polybrominated difenol ethers, ethers, ethers. These chemicals are used as flame retardants, they can slow, to slow the speed of flames, found in televisions, computers, insulation, foam products, and children's toys and baby pillows. These can shed and accumulate in dust, and exposures have been associated with thyroid issues. Air pollutants such as burning fossil fuels like coal, oil, or gas, usually associated with respiratory issues, and can also include nitrogen dioxide, formaldehyde, and benzene. High exposure to these air pollutants has been associated with lower birth weights, preterm deliveries, and congenital heart defects. The World Health Organization considers exposure to benzene as a major public health concern. The lead, which we all know is extremely dangerous, and we're grateful that our school districts have been testing all of our water for that, but the exposure to lead has been associated with ADHD, lower IQs, and developmental delays. Infants and toddlers are at the greatest risk of lead exposure because they frequently put their hands and toys in their mouth. Mercury is a naturally occurring element and can be released into the environment from the burning of coal and oil. Can also be found in household items such as thermometers, light bulbs, and older-model clothes dryers and washing machines. Mercury in the environment makes its way into fish and shellfish, but can also be in the water and all other kinds of things. And that exposure, especially in utero, can impact memory, attention, and cognitive skills. Polychlorinated bifenols, between 1929 and 1977, tons of these chemicals were used worldwide, and production was banned by the EPA in 1977, but they linger in the environment for a long time and can make their way into the food chain. They've been used as coolants and lubricants in electrical equipment because they are good insulators. They're associated with cancer in occupational settings and has been associated with issues in motor skills and short-term memory in children. Every single one of these from the DEC's report is found in this dump. If we start digging into there, all of this will be exposed, in whatever way, who knows what way, into our environment. It could affect our children, it can affect our communities. We have so many young families moving into this community now. I'm terrified that this could come into our world. I've been here for three and a half years, my children are young, and it scares me that we would allow something like that to come into our community, that we would allow anyone to come in without guaranteeing the safety of our children and the residents, not only in the immediate vicinity of this, of this quarry, but everywhere. The last thing we want is our beautiful town and this wonderful village to be known as a toxic place, that people start avoiding. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Actually, yeah, I'm going to let Mike, I know there's been a lot of things talked about tonight, so let's let Mike kind of, you know, address some of these.
I appreciate, I think this is maybe a good point, that if you allow me to weigh in on a couple of things. Going back to David and Albert, I'm not sure if you have internet access, but I would encourage you to watch the June 6 meeting. If you have questions on it, I'd be happy to talk to you offline about it and just give you some more background. I know this is the first meeting, David, that you've been at, but I would really take pleasure in giving you some more background. I want to do that now in a second also, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions. Sarah, the, the play that's getting from CNN and USA Today has a lot to do with household chemicals. And part of that project that's been brought up now are things that we're realizing that are in our environment, during the, the lining of our cans, bisphenol A is one of those, phthalates for a baby pacifier. A big punchline of that whole initiative is what's under our kitchen sink, what's in our shampoo, what's in our sunscreen, what's in our kids' sheets, or the carpet that you just buy that's off-gassing formaldehyde. It's bringing up issues of modern day, as much as it's bringing up some of the historic things. And not all those things are in this landfill here. There's plenty in this landfill. I don't want to paint or, or talk about that any differently. The first item that you brought up are pesticides. Pesticides were tested for in groundwater and soil. They're generally low levels, if you look at that data. DEC went over where they're detected and what those concentrations are, and the benchmarks of those levels. You know, in environmental chemistry, you could test anything and analyze it and find something in it, because we could, we could detect almost to a molecule in something. I could take this tap order here and run a test of it, and I'd probably find many of the things that you just rattled off, at least at some trace level in there. It's a perspective that we're dealing with as a society and a community. Now, we all have houses or apartments and places that we live, many of us have children, and this is a different issue here. We're dealing with something that maybe is out of our control, right? I mean, that's the perception here with the landfill and the cleanup. We live close by, we're worried about what's going to happen when they break ground. I mean, I need to talk about that at length tonight. That is a very heartfelt concern, and that's been the main comment from this community. And you know rightly so. I don't live here. I live up on the Hudson River a bit, I have a federal super fund not too far from my backyard, and I'm very concerned about these types of things. So I hope I can relay some perspective to you all tonight. One thing I want you to do, and David, maybe, maybe for your edification as well, but for everyone else, I mentioned at the outset of the meeting tonight that there's no final plan in place yet. The DEC has received numerous comments and letters, emails, et cetera. But this is what I understand the remedy might look like. This is what I anticipate it to be. And I could talk about each of these items in a little more detail, if you have questions afterwards. So there's about seven or eight elements of this remedy that I'd like to run through with you. Okay? First thing up would be a community air monitoring plan, a camp. Everything's an acronym in the environmental world. So, community air monitoring plan and a dust suppression plan. If there's a decision document issued by the state, there has to be a lot of work done to the satisfaction of the DEC and to this village before any ground is broken. I mentioned a bunch of things have to happen here before there's any approvals that, that could occur on the village level. And those things are still being vetted at DEC, obviously. Community air monitoring plan will test for gases that might escape, it will test for dusts that might have a litany of things attached to them. Those will be done at the property lines, all over the perimeter of the site and where that work area is, and there'd be dust suppression in place. This is not new or novel. Dust suppression in a community air monitoring plan are common, not only on brownfield sites, but state super fund sites, federal EPA super fund sites, which if you want to see real contamination and concentrations, you could look at some of those.
The containment of particles in the air typically done with water.
Water or foams, there's specialty foams that are used as well. Approved chemicals with nothing in them, not, not perfluorinated carbons, which is a big thing now with fire, fire suppression foams. This would be something, something different.
My question is that once these tests, let's just say, a couple of...
Sir, could you just please pick up at the mic? Thank you. Right now, I'm on a project on the weekends in the Gerollaman Tube, renovating the Gerollaman and Cranberry Tubes...
Wow.
Based on Hurricane Sandy.
I'm aware, I'm aware of the project, yeah.
Okay. We work in Gerollaman specifically. All tunnel lighting and electric has been removed. So there are, there is no convenience outlets on the wall. We have to run all types of equipment, electrical equipment, that some of it is not battery-powered, but it is in fact electrically powered with extension cords. In Gerollaman, we can't use power on the walls because it's not there, so we have to use generators.
Got it.
Generators emit carbon dioxide.
Big time.
Big time.
Right.
These shafts have to be ventilated, we have to wear monitors. Once those monitors start to go off, we have to evacuate the tube.
Mm-hmm.
I've seen guys pass out right next to me, literally. It happens all the time.
It's a very unsafe situation.
It's a very unsafe situation.
You're in a defined, confined space.
Correct.
On top of everything else.
On top of everything else. My question is that once these toxins are released, and they will most definitely be released upon breaking ground, there is no question. Based on my own knowledge, my own very limited knowledge of what is in that hole, what's in that earth, as soon as ground is broken, they had, that earth has not been vented, they just buried it. There's no vents like a dump that you see, you drive by a dump and there's vents, methane vents that come up because methane gas dissipates as soon as it hits the air.
Right.
The gases in that hole did not dissipate. Once they hit the air, what's going to happen on a hot summer day when it's humid and there is no movement of air? It's going to sit on top of this community.
I could answer that. Much like what you're hired and trained to do, David, in the hole there, there will be a remediation... a remediation contractor. This is not somebody from the Yellow Pages. This has to be someone, particularly at this site, that's ready to encounter combustible gas, ready to encounter landfill gases, forget about the toxics, but the things you just mentioned as well, and have the right monitors, badges perhaps? You said you wore a badge in that? Mediation workers that are on top of any activity going on will have a health and safety plan that the village knows about, and that will inform the community air monitoring plan.
Who picks up the cost for this? Because the cost is...
This will be the developer. The developer is...
Marriott.
The developers, Marriott's representative that does that. Now wait, I know where you're going with this, and I'm gonna skip ahead here a little bit. Aside from the community air monitoring program, there's a couple of things that are connected to that, and this is my understanding of the remedy that will be coming out. There will be at least one site meeting with the DEC and the DOH coming down here from Albany, with a selected remedial contractor, to my knowledge, probably not even selected yet until the decision documents are out and the remedy is defined, village representatives as well, and there are a host of things to look at. The village is not, or the DEC or DOH are not responsible for those remedial contractors. They have all the OSHA training, HazWAPR training, et cetera, how to work those instruments. But what is critical here is that any perimeter around that work area that's open for the day...
Is contained.
Is contained. There will be set working hours, no work area or open excavation will be left open overnight. Any stockpiled material that comes out will also be contained. And those air monitors, that protocol, it logs six, at least six readings every minute and produces a 15-minute average. If even one of those readings exceeds not an OSHA number, but a community health-based number for particulates, or VOCs, those gases, work stops. It's clearly defined that work has to stop there, the hole gets covered up, and there's a meeting that involves the state agencies and says, "What just happened? How do we remedy this?"
Okay, where I'm going with this, I appreciate all of that, believe me. I experienced this...
For the public too. Right.
Right. But really where I'm going with this is ke bono. Who benefits, really, from this hotel? Like, the costs that you're talking about, the costs to excavate that hole, to contain things, to have monitors, to have this, to have that, to have state, is not cheap, is most assuredly not cheap.
Absolutely.
Especially in the 21st century, especially in 2016, in New York State.
Throw on top of that, third part, hold on, throw on top of that, because this is a significant threat site, based on soil vapor data, there's a likely need for third-party monitoring on top of that.
Even more money.
Right.
So what is the benefit? What is the cost benefit to anyone, let alone Marriott? How much do they really think they're gonna take in from this? How much does a community really think is gonna be made from this project at the expense of, A, the cost that it's gonna be in dollars, and B, the cost that it's gonna be in health issues and life issues down the road? Maybe not today, maybe not next year, but I got news for you. I lived in a neighborhood in Brooklyn, and there's about, maybe a rough estimate, 20 people that I can name off the top of my head, all around the same age, they were raised around, there's an oil leak down by the Costco Bridge, it's been going on for about 30 or 40 years. Every one of these people is mentally challenged, every one of them. And they were raised right around this one little area, this one couple of blocks, right there. Nobody said a word about it. What we know today, all of the things that we know today, all of the things, and I'm no global warming person, believe me, I don't believe in it at all, but something's happening, and all the things that we know about today, why would anyone...
Mr. Crowley, just calm down a little bit.
I get a little...
No, it's all right, I get it. No, I understand. No, I'm just asking him just to, no, he's, okay, excuse me, excuse me. I'm just asking to be, and he gets it, I'm not...
No, I get it, I get it.
Yes.
I get it.
I'm not insulting.
I get, it is slight, Mr. Mayor, it is slightly insulting, I get heated.
No, no, that's not insulting.
And I, listen...
I'm just asking just to...
I get it, and I will. Do you want me to tone my voice down?
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is because when you, when this is replayed, you can't hear it, it's so loud that you can't, you're not even gonna be able to hear your voice. Okay.
All right. Well, my point is, my point is this, it makes no sense, again, it makes no sense. The people that live here, this is an incredibly beautiful community, and I've been to a lot of communities. I loved Tuckahoe, love it. Fell in love with it immediately, my wife and I fell in love with it immediately. She grew up in Eastchester. I don't understand the cost for this, what, all the things that you're talking about, and I know the costs of these projects, I work on them.
I'm sure you do.
Nightly. They run into the billions of dollars, not millions, billions, and there are people that are getting, and I know that from my own experience, there are people that are getting here and there, it happens. Listen, it happens.
You know, one of the things I've...
I'm not saying it's the board of trustees, I'm not saying it's anybody here.
No, I get that, I get that.
But I know, I know how this works.
Let me just say a couple of things.
I don't, one second, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, I don't understand the cost that this is gonna, in financial terms, makes, for me personally, it makes no sense financially, and it makes no sense physically, emotionally, for the people of this beautiful village to put this thing here and take the chance, regardless of the money. Can't take it with you.
Let me address a little bit of what you said. This is a private, the village never owned this property. The village never owned any of this land, it's privately owned. So, the developer who owns the property now, he's decided to put a Marriott Hotel up, he's actually decided to put a restaurant up. Nobody really talks about the restaurant, but he's putting a restaurant up too.
I wouldn't wanna eat there.
So, so he's gonna put it, you know, but he had a choice, he could've, it's owned, it's owned for multiple uses. He could've put up an office building. So whether he's putting up a hotel, an office building, he's owned property that he wants to develop, so that's first and foremost. I get that. He owns the land himself, the village doesn't own it, he's decided at this point that he wants to go ahead and build something on this property. You know, when the DEC comes back and tells him exactly what he's gonna have to do, I wonder whether he turns around and says, "You know what, it's not cost-effective for him to move forward with developing a hotel, or an office building, or a restaurant, or whatever's gonna be there." So, you know, I've been taking this, I've been really trying to take this in steps, and the next step I've been waiting for is to see what the DEC is gonna come out with. But in terms of, you know, a lot of people say, "Why are you allowing this? Why..." The village doesn't own this property. If the village owned this property, then you all own the property.
Well, you do allow it by letting, you grant the permits. He's not, you know, he's not allowed to do anything without the consent of the village.
He's as of right to build on his property within the zoning category that he has.
Within the zoning, I understand that, but he still has to pull permits. He can't just drive in there with tractors and start bulldozing and digging.
No, of course he has to pull, he has to make an application.
Okay.
All right.
Well, so it's not totally up to him.
No, I, look, you're in the business, you understand this. So he's gonna make an application, and he's gonna be granted a permit based on whether or not his, all the features of that project fit within the zoning of that particular parcel.
Understood. And what's the timetable we're looking at here?
The most important thing is, you, the mayor of this village, this beautiful village, it can't be... You have a right, because you are obligated to take care of our health and welfare.
That's right.
Especially the children. You can...
And that's, and that's exactly...
You don't keep talking about it, you can do it legally.
Okay, and that's exactly why I'm gonna let Mike continue, because he's being, he's doing a very good job in explaining that.
So, just to continue on with the remedy, we talked about community air monitoring program and dust suppression. There will be remediation of hotspot areas of soil, you've heard this before, removal of the source material. The DEC estimates somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200 cubic yards. Now, there's close to 100,000 cubic yards, I believe, in the 3.2-acre quarry, if you do the math, go all the way down. So the amount of excavation and grading, that includes the hotspots and grading as well, that excavation could grow beyond the numbers I just gave you, because endpoint sampling will be done, meaning they'll dig out an area where the remedial investigation showed there were some high numbers of things like metals or VOCs. They'll do endpoint sampling, which will dictate if they need to go further out or deeper. So that number could grow a little bit, but it's not like we're gonna be down in, and Anthony, to your point, totally get it, the dust suppression has to assume that we might hit the worst of the worst things. Those things that you've bought up, those things that Mr. Marinella has bought up over time, that's part of that kickoff meeting, that's part of the community air monitoring plan and dust suppression plan that has to go in. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Something that's been added to the remedy, my understanding of this, and this is of interest to the people along Marble Dale Road that border this quarry, is something called soil vapor extraction, and it's a technology that's used at gas station sites, sometimes dry cleaners. There's powered wells that are put into the ground, into the soil, and air is extracted out. It's a vacuum system that sucks air out of the ground and will remove those volatile chemicals that are sitting above the water table, below the ground surface. That air, by the way, that's collected, will be treated and discharged under a permit. It's a system that's designed and has to be tested, so it removes anything that it's sucking out, vacuuming out of that subsurface. That's in addition, from what I understand, is gonna be added to the remedy. We all know it's capping, no surprise here, a brownfield site with a development, with a hotel, with a restaurant, parking areas, this will now be sealed and capped. There are portions of that land that are pervious, there's rainwater that goes down in there, there's possibly off-gassing that comes up out of there. There is some ambient air data that's been collected, I could talk about that later if you want. When the DEC did its significant threat investigation in the homes or the businesses along Marble Dale, it did do ambient air sampling, along with indoor air sampling in those buildings. The indoor air samples required no immediate action to be taken in those buildings, those buildings that sit right on the edge of the quarry. So that data is out there, I've looked at it. Capping system will include clean soil or hard surfaces, asphalt, the buildings themselves. All this, by the way, will be monitored. If it is built, if the developer goes ahead with all this, if the remedy is built, all these elements have to be inspected periodically and certified by the developer into perpetuity. And I think that's a benefit that's not understated. You could dig out soil and go away and come back later. Did you get it all? I don't know. Well, there's controls in place, we're gonna take out the worst of the worst soil, at least that's what I believe the remedy's gonna be. We're gonna have vapor controls in place for anything residual that might vent up will be addressed. There will be this soil vapor extraction, high-powered system that will do more of that, and there'll be a capping system. There'll also be groundwater monitoring. Now, maybe David, for your edification here, this is only the brownfield site. It's not synonymous with the entire quarry. Mr. Marinella brought that up earlier. And Joe, with all due respect, there's something I did take exception in, there is a P site, a P site designation for portions of the quarry that are both north and south of the 3.2-acre brownfield site we're talking about tonight. A P site, and maybe I'm getting technical here, does not mean a superfund site. It may mean a superfund site, but there are many P site designations that don't make their way officially into the superfund program. If you go off this brownfield Marriott development site, there will be a plan in place that the DEC is still developing. The DEC is gonna run the show on that. So they're likely gonna be requiring soil borings and groundwater sampling north and south of the brownfield site. And Joe, when the data's in, that's when they'll make the determination.
Yeah, but, excuse me, Mike, you know I will never argue with you, you're too smart for this.
That's not true.
But I'm gonna tell you something right now, you were right in this room, you were right in this room, taking all kinds of notes. Both George and Randy said the north and south of the Marble Dale Road site is right now in a superfund site, period.
No, I disagree.
Would you do me a favor?
I will look back at it.
Well, you can look back.
I will look back at it.
But why didn't you do me a favor and put a board in the audience? Will you call them tomorrow, and if we're right, could you put a note somewhere? Because I don't have a computer.
Well, next time we appear here, I could talk more about it.
The north and south of this project is under the superfund program right now.
I think the only, what they were talking about was the King's Electronics site, was that a superfund site?
Well, that absolutely...
That King's, which was across the street, yes.
That absolutely was a state superfund.
About your friend who appointed you to the board for five years, that's talking about the molasses all the time. He's an electrical engineer, he knows nothing, nothing about the environmental problem in this village, nothing.
Joe, I'm sorry to lead down the path, that's just my take on these other portions of the quarry.
Would you please call them?
I will clarify, of course I will, I will clarify that.
I'd just like to ask, and it's one question that's real. You don't pay for this?
We are.
Exactly. Just so you know, this developer is getting reimbursed with a payment, a glow, for a hotel.
State debate.
State debate.
Well, so let me finish going through the other portions of the remedy.
I don't want to say...
John, could you just give me a minute?
The science, the science is beyond anybody in this room.
Do you have to...
Please come up to the, please speak up to the mic, please.
Go ahead.
John Mariani, 8 Henry Street, been here for 39 years, not as long as some, and longer than others. This is democracy in action. I think everybody on this board should really register that. This is what makes America great, despite such comments by certain people who are running for president today. This is what America is all about, it's democracy in action. This does not represent everybody in the village, but probably they couldn't be here. Because I cannot imagine anyone who would not be here, if they could, to speak against something which is still a question and perhaps a conundrum. And I yield to you in the science, but if I lived in Flint, Michigan, would I have said, "You know, you told me it was safe, you told me that everything is gonna be okay," even though I didn't have anything to do with it? And the mayor of Flint, Michigan said, "This is gonna be safe," and the mayor said, "But we're gonna be saving money for the village of Tuckahoe." We're gonna be saving money for it, okay? Well, some of you may remember the back of the 90s, I was a trustee up there, Joe Federus was mayor. And at that time, well, we were pretty flush, taxes were going up and so forth. And it was a damn good time, my taxes were low up on 8 Henry Street. And I remember the Revlon, so-called Revlon property came up at that time, and there was a big hoo-ha about how a medical, a medical research group was gonna go in there, and they were gonna, I don't know, put terrible things in rabbits' eyes, and they were gonna burn them in a furnace, and the whole town rose up and said, "Well, that could be bacteria coming out of there." And probably, probably, it was overstated, but nothing happened. I was out of office. Revlon turned into the property that it is now. We were all promised that, you know, "Hey, that's gonna be great for our taxes, right? That big, huge property." Then, Main Street townhouses were built. That's gonna reduce our taxes, right? Hmm, that didn't work either. So now we have the RV, and I'm not happy, unhappy to see that gone, and that's going up, are my taxes gonna go down?
No.
Probably not. So now we are presented with, is it Marriott? Marriott Hotel. Now, as most of you know, I'm a travel food writer. I stay in Marriott's and Stover's and Ritz-Carlton's and Four Seasons, and I know that business well. And for anybody to suggest that Marriott itself, because we're talking about the developer, we're talking about Marriott. Marriott does not generally build things and put their own money into it, and if they get a whip of something's gonna be problematic, they said, "We don't want anything to do with this," or, okay? So, what happens is the developer, you're telling, what you're saying, and this is wonderful to hear, it really... to hear, it really is, they're going to have to do one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 things, and then we're going to have other people come in, this is going to be so great, and every guy, if you walk down the street and you smell something, they're going to have these guys out there, just, this is costing them a fortune for what? A 30, 40, 50, 100-room hotel?
150.
150, okay. 150-room. Now, I have to, talking from what I do for a living, known Tuckahoe for 40 years and having grown up most of my life in Eastchester and Bronxville and Tuckahoe, what is this going to do for us? So if the board is going to tell us in this room that adding this 150-room hotel is going to just reduce our taxes, and there are going to be so many people there coming, and there's going to be, because, I don't know if everybody knows, but every hotel pays, everybody who stays in a hotel, every guest pays money, and that, and the hotel has to pay that back to the village, the municipality, the state, whatever. And so that's going to be great. Everybody who stays there is going to be paying $10, $15, $20 that goes into our coffers. Are you guaranteeing me that this intrusion into Tuckahoe is going to lower our taxes? Or are we going to turn into, I mean, everybody here loves this village because it is small, and there's a carvel over here, we got an Indian restaurant, we got 19 pizzerias, you know? I had a wonderful meal at Mama Suntas. And now, so we're going to, you know, we've had development on Main Street, we had the Revlon property, we got the RV place that is, that's really beautiful, that's really, really great. What has it done for us? So if another parcel turns off, if another square inch of Tuckahoe turns up for development, are we going to put up another three stories or a hotel? We have to, the real question here is not that you and everybody is not going to do their job and make sure this thing is safe, despite what everybody knows is lying underneath all of this. The question is, what kind of village do we want to be? And, I mean, I used to have a Marriott hotel, maybe, but anybody going to benefit from it in any way, shape, or form? So, you know, the ancient Greek historian Herodotus says, "Men love their country, or their city, or their little village, not because it's great, but because it's theirs." We don't want to lose the soul of this village of Tuckahoe in the county of Westchester, in the state of New York, in the United States of America, in the Western Hemisphere, in the globe, in the Milky Way, in the mind of God. We are special, and we want it to stay special. So, that's about it.
I'm sorry, anybody else?
I appreciate that. There is, yeah. There is, there is that. And there, I think there is a larger picture. I had a train wreck there, sorry about that. There is that, there are, I think there are so many things involved in this that, like I said, we just moved here. This is all new to me. I've never done these things before. But I'm gonna, all the time. And you may yield to, David?
It's Mike.
Mike? Bob, Jim, whatever.
Thanks.
Mike, you may yield to him scientifically now, but give me six months and you'll be yielding to me. Because I'm going to know everything there is to know about this. I guarantee you that. That's just how I am. I'm obsessive compulsive, I'm a recovering alcoholic, that's how I roll. And you can ask my wife. I'm going to know. I'm going to know. And I do this. I do this for a living. I'm in these things, up to my knees. I come home every night looking like a coal miner, every night, every morning, I should say. I'm going to know. And, again, it makes no sense. I just found this little gem called Tuckahoe. I'd like to keep it, just like it is. I'd like to keep it in honor of this man who served this country honorably, in honor of everyone else in this, from this area, who served and still serves, and in honor of the people that still live here and love Tuckahoe. And I'm going to do my damnedest to make sure that that happens. I don't think, like this gentleman said, this, who is it going to benefit? Really, who is going to benefit? I said this earlier, K. Bono, who benefits from this monstrosity that's going to go up here? Economic development? More congestion? More people? Less taxes? Eh! We all know that's not happening. We all know it. What will happen is the prices of things will go up. That's what will happen. More people will come in, more people will start, the property value is going to go up, great. Cost of living is going to go up. Wages may go up, highly unlikely, but everything else is going to increase. And who's going to pay? When I come home on a Sunday morning after I worked a 12-hour shift in a tube, or Saturday morning, and I see guys getting up, going to work, it does my heart good. It really does. Little things like that, my little corner of the universe, when I see people getting up to go to work, "Hey, what's up, Bob? Hey, Jim, hey, how you doing? Good morning, good morning." I love that. I eat it up. With a spoon, I eat it up. This is America. This is the America that I've been looking for, for 52 years. And I found it. I found it here. I like it. I want to keep it like that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Marinella, we have quite a few other people like to speak.
My name's Mike Dardano, I live at 62 Chestnut Street. I've lived here since 2001. And the point this gentleman made was really important. I think Flint is apropos, I think Love Canal is apropos, not in the severity, this isn't Love Canal, but also 9/11, where we were told that the ground, the air was going to be safe. And I understand that there are good intentions, and I like economic development, I think we all do, because, you know, technically, economic development is good. Construction, construction is good, construction jobs are good, the sales tax, the hotel tax is good, all that's good. But what isn't good is when I hear stories from Joe and from other people that the dump used to spontaneously combust. Now, unless you're lighting a match, we know that that's bad when things spontaneously combust, and I know they had firemen there, too, to watch that stuff. And it's those chemicals, you don't know what they are. I used to work, I'm in PR and marketing and advertising, so I know all the media, so that's one of the reasons why I'm here, and I know you guys all love the media. But I used to work at a, with a firm that did restoration in buildings in New York City. And a lot of the buildings they worked on were stuff from the 1880s, 1890s, 1910, 1920s, and they didn't have the blueprints. And so what would happen is, they thought the wall would be six feet or eight feet, whatever, and then they would break it down, and they're like, "Oh, wow, there's more brick, or there's more whatever, or there's unknown stuff there." That's what scares me, the unknown stuff. The plan sounds great, but when that unknown thin thing hits, that's what gets me nervous. And I live right where the stuff's going to float, right where the stuff's going to float, you know? I'll just, I can sit there and go, you know, breathe it in. That's what scares me. And, it's not what you're thinking, minuscule particles of, I know, right, minuscule particles of dust, you know, a filter can filter something, but it doesn't filter everything. That's the concern I have. That's the concern I have. And it's, the developer can, you're right, it's private property, totally get it, but it just is disconcerting, that's all. Because I know you guys don't want to breathe it in, you don't want to breathe it in, there's children from Waverly don't want to breathe it in, you know, all of us here don't want to breathe it in. So the things that you're saying are great, but it's still, you know, you've got to understand where we're coming from.
I do.
There's a lot of mistrust in officials telling us, "It's safe," you know? The plane hits the, "Don't, don't go down the tower, stand up there." It's okay to go to 9/11. I'm not saying you guys had anything to do with that, but you've got to understand, this isn't like 1910, we were ignorant. We have lots of stuff, some of it's false, but I think the fact that you guys are meeting here and listening to the public is a good thing. I want to commend you for that and letting people speak. I also want to thank the veterans for serving. I think it's great that we have so many veterans here, and I think that it's wonderful that they're speaking out. So I just wanted to say that from the bottom of my heart, that I care about this. I'm from Massachusetts, like the Red Sox, but I still love Tuckahoe, okay? Just to tell you that. You know, go Sox, but I love, I love Tuckahoe. That's why I've been here for 19 years, so I just...
What's your last name again, sir?
It's Dardano. D-A-R-D-A-N-O.
Okay, thank you.
Calabrese.
Hold on, if I, Mike, if I could just respond to a couple things. Appreciate your comments, of course. One thing I will say about this landfill, a lot of anecdotal evidence, Anthony and Joe, historic information that no longer exists, just like the renovation, blueprints say one thing, you get in. I just want to note, that's the nature of a lot of environmental work and a lot of Brownfield sites, right? You know that. There's a series of borings and wells that are put across. It's not like we could have a magic window down into the ground and see there's that old coach bus, or there's, looks like an old carcass of a drum or a tank. Anthony, I'm not disputing it, and it's exactly what I'm saying.
Let me just tell you one thing.
Hold on, Mr. Laurie, please, let's let him finish.
Just let me, one, this thing, Mayor. When I worked for a contractor, '65, '66, right up to '69, before I went into the service, we removed all the asbestos off the boilers in the Pelham schools. Nobody knew nothing about it, we had no masks, nothing. Just took it off the boilers, the pipes, carried it outside in coal bags, in wheelbarrows, and then shoveled it on the trucks with pitchforks. No masks, nothing like that. I drove, no cover on the truck, we had an old Parkway truck, a 1958 Chevy, and a Ford. We drove from Pelham, no covers on the body of the truck, all the way from Pelham, through, right through Pelham, Chester Heights, up Nourishell Road, down 22, down Winter Hill Road, drove there, and you could see the dust flying off the truck, all the way from Pelham, and dumped it in there. When we finished Pelham High School, we did all the grammar schools. Nobody ever knew what the asbestos was in them days. And like I said, just come home, take your clothes off, throw them in the wash. But let me tell you something, there's a lot of asbestos there, and that's just from the Pelham schools with this contractor had had. God knows where any other come from, but there's plenty of it down there, and there's plenty of stuff that's going to hurt the people and the children in this village. And I have four and a half grandchildren right now, and I don't want to see them get hurt from this thing. When they come to visit my house, at my home, or anybody else's home, the children around here. We grew up in this village thinking nothing of it. We didn't know nothing of it. Maybe we were blind to it, or we didn't know nothing, but we never had environmentalist stuff or anything like that. We used to see the raccoons running in and out of the sewers, like water going in and out of there. So let me tell you something, you could do all the studying you want, I'm telling you, there's a lot, a lot of sick stuff down there. Believe me when I tell you.
No one's disputing it. What I was just going to say, though, the studies that you're talking about that have been done, you can't see the entire footprint and look down and point to those things. Again, it goes back to the environmental contractors that do this for a living. It goes back to air monitoring and dust suppression that works, and has a process that if it's not working, alarms are sounded and things are stopped. The DEC and the DOH get this. The concentrations that we found in this landfill are not that unusual, just let me say this for a second, when you're talking about volatile chemicals, semi-volatiles, metals like lead, old pesticides or PCBs, some of them are in there, but it's not that unusual for old legacy landfills in the state. The presumptive remedy for landfills is not to do a study of them in a research project. The idea here of 1,200 to 1,500 cubic yards, which is a small fraction of penetration in this larger area, and then depending on a capping remedy, I think is sensitive to a lot of the things that we're saying there. Before any ground is broken, there's a lot of work that has to be done. I think that's the punchline I'm getting at.
But what's the timeframe?
The timeframe, what I went through a little bit earlier, the DEC is still waiting to finalize some of the key decision documents, okay? After that, if the village approvals are set, or when the village approvals are set, whatever happens, there's kickoff meeting with the DEC and DOH, remedial contractor has to come on board. You know, we're talking, David, weeks to months.
Weeks to months?
Before starting.
Okay, weeks, that's, that's...
Okay.
Weeks to months, we're not talking about a couple more years, we're talking about weeks to months. This could all, if you could break ground, like the Pelham...
It's, I can't talk to all the schedules, but that's, see, I laid out what is needed to be done, the DEC and the village.
They, all intents and purposes, they could break ground before the end of this year.
It's possible, I feel it's possible, yeah.
All right, well, then I got, I got a lot. I got a lot of work to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom, if you wanted to... Yeah. Just wanted to address some of the comments of the, of the public so far. And from my perspective, I think it's great that we have people who are lifelong residents of this village who can speak about its history. I think it's great to have people like Mr. Krilly, who comes in with such passion, who says they want to live here because it's a great place, and they've spent so much time looking for the place where they want to live. I can tell you that, from my experience with the, my colleagues on this board, that we have our children living here, we want, we share in the PTAs' concerns about breathing in safe air, and about the fact that our children and our neighbors and our friends run around in this area, and we want them to be safe, and we want them to be healthy. And frankly, none of us have any real financial gain from what's going on with this particular development. And there are a lot of issues that were touched upon with respect to whether we should be pro-development or anti-development. It goes far afield of what's going on here, so I'm going to try to reduce it to what's simple. And it really is, I think, you're simply talking about one spot of land. And, and to me, there are really three choices, right? Number one is, nothing happens. Unfortunately, we have all that toxic, you know, somebody said something about we don't want to bring anything toxic to this village. Unfortunately, it's already here. It's here. So we can do nothing. I think that's option number one. Then there's option number two, which is what Mr. Muso with Mike's talking about, and it involves all kinds of things, you know, a kind of a half-clean-up, a capping, and then monitoring. And that stuff scares me, too, because I'm not a scientist, and when you speak of, you know, people doing the right thing, and whether it's going to be, completely protect the public, I'm not sure I really, I know whether that's going to happen, and I think, I think a lot of the people out there who are speaking feel the same way, we don't really know. And do we really think that the developer is looking out for the citizens of Tuckahoe's best interests? I think all of us have some question there, right? That really, that's a financial interest of the developer. And I'm going to be completely frank, from my understanding, that developers' precedents were partial dumpers in that, in that lot. So there's something ironic about it. But, that said, it's option number two, it's on the table. Option number three is a superfund cleanup. And some of the people in this audience have advocated for a superfund cleanup. I'm not sure that's the best thing for this village either. My understanding is that if you cleaned up that site, and I asked Mr. Muso to do some kind of soft calculations, that could cost $45 million. It could take, it could take a couple of years to do, and it would involve tens of thousands of truckloads of dirt, with all of that stuff in it being marched through our village. I'm not sure if that's the best thing to do either. So the people who say that, "Let's clean this up with a superfund," and that's the solution, I'm not sure it is. So let's, let's try to think about, really, what is best. And so I think we really have to look at things through that lens in order to make, to make a decision. And my fear is, in doing nothing, we have already, may have done something, that now, if we do nothing, all three of those become superfund sites. And you talk about who pays for it? Yeah, maybe the state pays for it. But you know who they look for to pay, to reimburse that money?
Taxpayers.
Yes, the taxpayers, and also, they look to the people who own the site. So, and people who had control of the site. So there may be people, and I, the village has never owned it, do we know that for a fact, that the village has never had any ownership?
Yeah, the village has never had title to that property.
Okay, because if there is, there may be some risk that, you know, that there are costs that come back to us. I would hope that that's not the case, and that becomes economically poor for us. So, so, so in my mind, it's, this is not really simple. And I'm not convinced yet that option number two, where you actually do some cleanup and cap it, is not the best of those three options. So I just, I really, you know, I, I think it's difficult, and I think, from my perspective, my mind isn't made up as to what's best, and, and I think that, I'd like to echo the fact that, you know, that we continue to listen to the information that we have in order to try to make the best possible decision that we can make for this community in which we all live, which we all love, and which we all want to make sure that our, our children and their grandchildren can thrive and be healthy.
What's the rush?
Tom, Tom brings up a good point. Well, what's the rush? First of all, it's not, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
It's not our project, we don't own it. And I think that, you know, a lot of people, they just kind of think that we could go ahead and say, you know what, we're going to decide to do this tomorrow. We not, we're not owners of this site, so we're actually monitoring, and we are reactive to the property owner as to what his wishes, what his intentions are, I shouldn't say wishes, what his intentions are for developing the site. So, you know, Tom was right, the developer could have done nothing. That, that site has been an empty piece of land. It was a parking field for Verizon trucks there for a while, there was contractors that parked on it. So what actually is it that makes it today advantageous for Bill Wynn Development? It's not Marriott, you're right, Marriott is just a franchisee, it could be a different brand, it's Super Eight or whatever, a different motel. So what makes the property owner, Bill Wynn Development, go ahead today and say, you know what, I want to put a building up? Happens to be a hotel. Like I said, it could have very well been something else. I know that when the master plan made a recommendation for the entire village, when they updated, there's a master plan, somebody had kind of asked about where are we, you know, where does this fit in in the, in the global picture of the village? Well, a lot of people don't realize there's a master plan. You can, I believe, pick it up from our website now?
(inaudible).
Yep, okay. So you're going to see in that master plan, it talks about a recommendation for different areas of the village of Tuckahoe. So it talks about Crestwood, what would be a good fit, and what would work there. It talks about the Marbledale Road corridor, and it talks about the zoning category, it was recommended to rezone it many years ago, and one of the, one of the allowances in that zoning code was a hotel. There's a lot of other things, but a hotel happened to be one of them. But, you know, one of the things that I, I asked the D.C. when they had the big meeting on the, in April, is, and I've said this many times, you know, people just talk about this as a hotel. I, I look way beyond that. To me, I look at it as somebody who's developing this land. It's, it has nothing to do, to me, it has nothing to do with a hotel. Is a hotel going to bring extra, going to make, make it where I don't have to pay any extra money in taxes? Absolutely not. I don't think any project there is going to do that. Will the hotel, will the hotel generate a, is there going to be a, a hotel tax in the, in the village, as well as other villages in New York, a three percent hotel tax? There might be, if the governor signs that. So that would be the extra revenue for the village. But even that, as such a small sum of money, it's maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think they
Do you pay taxes?
Well, oh, yeah, the developer, well, the developer pays taxes on the property now, it pays taxes on vacant land, so.
But he makes from the hotel.
Well, he'll be paying, yeah, the sales taxes that's generated on that goes into the county, and we get a portion of that. So, but I think that, you know, does a, does an office building or a hotel generate so much additional income that, you know, we look at it as, oh, this is so desirable, let's, let's go ahead and, and see if this is going to be built because we need all this extra revenue? No, I don't see that at all, I see
Any further development of the six tenths of a square mile that is Tuckahoe and Crestwood will not bring any more money
Oh, no, it absolutely will, yes. No, I'm not saying that.
It will not affect our taxes.
It's, no, it's, I'm not saying that, the question was, will we pay less in property taxes? It's going to reduce the overall tax burden, but there's additional expenses, and I've made this point many times over the last year. You know, there's going to be additional cost in
I don't want to say a few words.
There's going to be additional cost in policing, an office building or property there, there's going to be additional cost in picking up sanitation, in maintaining the streets, so there is
So if Tuckahoe is, has an accretion of more buildings and more density of a new three-story building here, there, or in Crestwood, or anywhere, your sense is saying that, well, we're going to have to service them, to police them, so we're getting no benefit whatsoever?
No, I'm not saying that any project doesn't give a benefit to it. There, you know, the county gave a tax incentive for this developer to build on this site, and so why did the county, why did Westchester County give a, an incentive there? Is there job creation? Yes, absolutely, there's going to be job creation. So there, there's other things that are, that are looked at, but I know, Mr. Marinelli, you're asking to yield your time to Mr. Stowe, and I would like to hear Mr. Stowe.
I want to speak.
Yes, please.
This lady wants to speak, but I just wanted to just say one thing.
Okay.
I don't want you to think for any minute that there's anybody, and I'm talking for myself now, I don't hate you, and I don't hate anyone else sitting on that board.
No, we don't take it personally.
And I want you also to know, and you could keep going around and around and around, that's what they call spin, you could keep spinning and spinning and spinning. Go home tonight, Steve, put your head on your pillow, and think of your son and your own family, and remember this, you are the elected mayor of the village. You got elected by us, and so did the trustees. You are the custodian right now, Steve, right now, to protect the children of this village, period. You are the custodian, along with the trustees. You're in charge of our health and welfare. I'm telling you, that quarry is dangerous, dangerous, and leave it alone.
And this application came to this board, no other board prior to this. You mentioned, you know, what about fifty years? You know, for fifty years, this, this land was never brought to any other administration, any other village board, other than this one, so we're dealing with it.
You're right, Steve, but in the meantime, let the attorney keep digging into who actually owns this piece of property. You might be shocked and surprised that Mr. Schottnick still owns this property, wouldn't you?
No, we're looking into it.
And then another thing I want you to just remember, when you go home and sleep tonight, I know, when you go home and sleep, do this for me tonight, if the superfund comes in, Tom, if the superfund comes in, wouldn't you be shocked, and wouldn't all those other trustees sitting up there with you right now, that when the state comes in and does their testing, it's going to be altogether different than what the developers' people did? You might be very well shocked, wouldn't you? You, you would, Steve. When the state comes in and does their own, Tom, the state said they would come in and they would also continue testing, and it would be the state doing it, not developer, not the gentleman he hired.
So the state should have, give what the developers testing, no credence, or very little.
Well, let me put it this way to you, Steve.
Go ahead.
The developers' people that did the testing, how is it that Rachel's people that she hired found differences? How, how is it that
Actually, they didn't find any differences.
Now, you know
No, no, Joe, let me finish. Joe, you continue to interrupt, let me finish.
Go ahead.
The data is the data, they have different conclusions from the data.
No, they found, they actually found different products that wasn't discovered by the developers' people. Hey, I had a big conversation with Bill, you know, but let Mr. Stowe, my good friend, Mr. Stowe, he wants to get up, Mayor.
Mr. Stowe, please.
And by the way, I, I hope you take what I said with credence. I don't think there's anybody in this village that hates you, Steve. I don't know of anybody.
Thank you, Joe.
We don't, we don't think, right now, you're doing the right thing, and you're on the wrong path. Forget the hotel.
Pardon me.
That includes your mother-in-law.
My mother. May she rest in peace. Bye, Mr. Stowe.
Edward Stowe, my wife and I, we're the owners of Four Marble Place, as you know, and, of course, we grew up here in the village of Tuckahoe, and we still have a lot of compassion for it. Still go to church here, you know, and involved with the VFW posts here, and other activities in this community. So I come, you know, not contentiously, but I do come in a, in a spirit of harmony, and, you know, for, for the, for the community. So it's my sincere hope that you'll be considerate and sensitive to the comments that are being made here by the people in the community. Because what you're hearing and what you're witnessing is the collective voice of the people, not just the individuals, but the collective voice of the, of the individuals, of here and the, and the surrounding communities, meaning East Chester, Bronxville, and their message is one of concern, in one word, concern. That's, that's it, that's their main message. The current concern right now is for more testing as a matter of great importance to us. Our minds are in a state of uneasiness because of that. Concern for our children, our parents, and for our seniors are very important to us. So this creates a feeling of uncertainty, and it is of great concern. Now, what we need to know is that we have heard contrasting statements, that's the problem. We've heard contrasting statements, so we don't know what to believe. That's, that's the main thing, we don't know what to believe. So what I say about that is, the uncertainty is based upon the facts that are not known to us, that are not known to us. And that means that we can't have truth, we don't, we don't know truth. That's the problem, we don't know truth. We don't know truth about the means and the methods that are being used. We don't know about the potential adverse effect about the joy of living safely in this small community. We don't know that. So since risks do present, you know, health problems to us, the potential is there, it's as well-known, it's well-documented, and hard to quantify. So our major concern right now is, we need the assurance, the assurance of truth based upon accurate testing. That's our problem, and we urge you to think it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Michelle Frisaglia, and I actually live in East Chester, 115 Park Avenue, and I have a daughter, at Waverly, and an older child, in one of the other schools as well. And I think you have basically heard, I really appreciate your comments, because we just don't know. We just don't know the right path to follow. And although there was another study done, and the data is the data, the conclusions were very, very different, and that's really concerning. So as a parent, when I see very different conclusions drawn from the same data, I don't think the hotel's looking out for my six-year-old. I think the independent person analyzing the data has no bias, doesn't care about a profit, and that's what I'm going to believe. Because as a parent, as you are parents, you know, you have to look out for the best interest of your children. You've heard the community, you have a perception problem. They are not believing, although you're very well-spoken, and I'm sure the developers' personnel are very well-spoken, you have another set of conclusions being drawn that's very different from yours. And as parents, it's our job to protect our children. You are the elected officials, I don't vote for you. This is the summertime, if this were not the summertime, you would see probably tripling amount of people here. The Waverly PTA has done a great job organizing people. We trust you to look out for us. You are the elected officials. You have to think about those other conclusions that were drawn. We're asking you to think about our six-year-olds. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, I want to touch Tammy before, thank you. You know, when, when the village hired Mike Muso, H.D.R., they work for a lot of other, they represent a lot of other municipalities. He actually represents, not the developer, he represents every one of the taxpayers in the village of Tuckahoe. This firm, and this particular individual, is the brightest of, as you have seen, I'm sure. Not, not only well-spoken, but in the meetings that we have, he breaks it down. I have more faith in this individual than I do in any of the other people, the other ex, you know, claimed experts that have provided data on it. So I can tell you that, as far as I'm concerned, I take what this man says as, that's the true factual data. Now, I want to get back to something I said earlier. You know, the D.C. and the Department of Health is then probably struggling with the R.A.W.P., the decision document, the response, all these documents that they're going to go ahead and deliver to the applicant, and they're going to give a copy to us, which we just turn around and give to this gentleman here, because we don't understand this. We don't understand the science, right? I know that this is at the, this is really, you know, this particular, this little project is being micromanaged in Albany, far greater than probably sites that are ten times the size of this. So that gives me, and that is, that only occurred because of, you know, people who are here tonight, and because what's, you know, some of the comments, all the petitions, the concern, yeah, absolutely, all that information that has been brought to Albany's desk. That's what put it to that level of importance. That is a wonderful thing, because if nobody came out, maybe we wouldn't be here tonight, because six months ago, the developer would have been building an office building or a hotel, you know, six months ago. So I think that's a wonderful thing.
I agree.
I'm just asking everyone, as well as us, to be patient, to wait until Albany comes out with these documents, so we can then have our expert, your expert, the village's expert, not the developer, the village's hired gun, to go ahead and examine this, and in, you know, I mentioned at our last meeting, above and beyond whatever that says, we are most likely going to engage the services of either his firm or another firm, most likely to be his firm, to go ahead and put an additional daily layer of oversight on the project. We can't get this wrong. We're not going to get a second chance. I, nobody knows, I live on Marbledale Road, and as you've heard, I've lived here all my life. We're not going to get a second chance. I went to Waverly for seven years, from kindergarten through sixth grade, so it's, I get it, you know, I'm, I'm not
That's scary.
Yeah, you know, I don't want to be an alarmist here, you know, I, I understand that we're not going to get a second chance here, so it is our responsibility to make sure that we put into place the best of the best. I feel very confident, we have the best of the best looking at this right now.
And I hope that you do go ahead with that extra layer of protection, then, because again, now we're saying to the developer, you must do all these things.
I don't trust any developer, because a developer, look, a developer is, is going to do whatever possible to maximize profit. Look, I get it, we all get up in the morning to make money, we don't get up in the morning to lose money, I understand that. So, but it's our job, it's my job and this board's job to make sure that it's done right. I don't, you know, I'm not concerned with the developer's schedule and tracking, I'm more concerned of what this gentleman here is advising us as to how it should go. That's first and foremost.
And I think it's important that the community continue to stay updated, posted information when we do get the documents. I think there was also concern that the meeting was pushed to July nineteenth, I believe. A lot of us are away, I myself will be away, and we're concerned, and we want that information.
That's a planning board meeting. The next step after, after Albany delivers all their documentation, the next step for this applicant is, he has to go to the planning board to get, to seek approval, so there'll be a vote at the planning board level.
Is that the July nineteenth meeting?
That is, that's the next time they meet. They meet in July, and if, if he's on their agenda and he gets approval at the July meeting, then the steps after that is he actually, you know, he comes down to the building department and pulls a permit to start working on the site. But in between all that is our, normally, we don't get involved in, if this was just somebody putting up a, an office building on Main Street, the village board doesn't really have any input on this at all. We are taking the additional steps to make sure that we have the experts to make sure this is done right.
Can he still go to the July nineteenth meeting if we don't have these documents?
He probably wouldn't, I, I don't see why he would go there, because I think that, you know, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, great.
That's our village attorney, Gary Garson.
Hi, good, thank you. So the applicant has a, an application before the planning board for
Mm-hmm.
So if you look at seven dash one of our code, there's a whole list of things that the planning board needs to look at for a site plan. Also, New York State says, okay, planning board, you have to look at the environmental issues here also. So what the planning board did was, in, in kind of the beginning of the process of this application process, the planning board, knowing this was part of the brownfield program, said, okay, what we're going to do is what's called a conditional negative declaration. So what we're going to say is that we don't believe that this hotel or this project's going to have a significant environmental impact, except for the brownfield issues. And what we're going to do with the brownfield issues are sending, we're going to condition our negative declaration. The condition is that D.C. and the Department of Health sign off on this, come in and say, this is the remedy that
Will make it buildable.
Make it livable, make it better. I went to Waverly, I'm a lifelong person. So what happens is, until that condition's met, until the D.C. comes down, those are the documents that Mike Muso was talking about, the planning board's not going to make a determination.
Okay.
They really can't, because
They need those documents.
They need those documents. And again, what they're looking at now is, the, the planning board's going through site plans, so they're going, again, seven dash one, if anyone wants to look at it, it's on the website, it's what the planning board's looking at for the site plan review, and they're really kind of waiting for this And they're really kind of waiting for this, the DEC and Department of Health to come down with its decision letter, saying, hey, this is how we're gonna correct this site.
Okay.
So, that's kind of, if these documents don't come out, or they come out late, where I don't think, Mr. Musso doesn't have time to review them.
Have to push it back to the next planning meeting.
We're gonna say, listen, we can't go forward. Could be a last-minute type thing. We usually put it on the website as soon as we know.
Okay. The planning board website?
Village website.
The village website.
It's the planning board agenda.
Planning board, okay.
And that's kind of happened the last couple of months. They've been on the agenda, but nothing's happened with the DEC. There's also stormwater issue and a sewage issue that this applicant's going through with the planning board has to look at, and we're waiting for, we have professionals looking at that also, and that date is not in yet either. So, we're also waiting on that also.
Okay.
So, he has to have both those things done before, really, the planning board's gonna make a determination on site plan. So, you just have to keep looking at the website.
Wait for that, okay.
I guess you call the clerk's office, that they know too.
Okay.
But as soon as I hear, or as soon as, you know, I hear from either developer, or it just gets too late, then we just say, listen.
We have to push it to the next meeting?
We have to push it to the next meeting.
Okay.
And then we try to let everybody know, let the department know, let the building department know, and they'll put it on the website. So, we try to get that out there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your rational comments.
Michelle, if I could just respond to just a couple of things?
Yes.
I just want to note that in my role here, I've reviewed the other consultant reports.
Yes.
And I've made sure that the DEC has had those reports. Mr. Hughes, Don Hughes, I spoke to on the phone a few times.
Okay.
We've discussed data. They haven't collected their data. We're all working from the data set by the applicant here.
Okay.
Okay? That was all collected under a program and work plan designed and approved by the DEC.
Okay.
But it's a lot of data. I mentioned soil, soil gas, groundwater, ambient air, et cetera. So, just to clarify that, I think that's very important. And yes, I work for a private consulting company.
Mm-hmm.
I'm hired and retained by the village to represent your interests here, much the same way the other consultants are hired, right?
Yes.
On another end. I just suggested the DEC and the DOH, and I don't know if you've worked with them, other issues or not?
I have not, no.
But, you know, like the state education department?
Worked with them.
I know you have.
Oh, yes.
So, they're in that entity, right? So, that's what their task to do, is to stay in the middle, to be objective-
Right.
And to protect human health and the environment. So, they're a state agency with absolutely no interest in any of this. I thank you for the words, Mayor Eklund. If it does come that HDR is involved in this project, I would personally love to be that interface with many of you during the process. There's a lot more work that's to be done after the decision documents issued and ground would be broken. I want to stress that. There's just a lot of things that have to be tied up, and I think that's gonna be defined in the remedial action plan and in the decision document. And I could tell you again, the agencies are very sensitive to your concerns.
Thank you.
And just one other thing, we're keeping up here.
Oh.
You know, keeping the public informed is important. And sometimes when we're trying to inform the public, they're terribly confused. I'm confused at a lot of this stuff. But what we will make a point of doing is, as Mike mentioned, there's gonna be some baseline data that's gonna be collected before, if this application is approved, there'll be some baseline data that will be collected, so we all know where the project starts. We'll know a snapshot of all of the-
Different levels.
Exactly. And then, we're gonna be taking readings on a daily basis after that. How do we get that information to the general public is something that we're gonna work on, whether it's through an email blast, whether we have community me, I mean, we can't have a community meeting every week, you know, we could, but I don't know if, you know-
Email blast, probably, a good way to keep you informed.
Either that, or maybe we put it on our website, we may put a section, I, most likely, we'll actually carve out a page in our website where we'll have all that information. I could see that as more realistic. Everyone has access, so they can go ahead and log in and see on a periodic basis as to what's going on, the status of the project, and the status of, you know, this data that we've collected, so.
Thank you.
It's information. Look, it's, as you said, you know, it-
We need information.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tammy, please, thank you. Thanks for your patience.
I, I can't tell you, Tammy Obradovich, Lake Avenue, how happy I am to hear the village being proactive on this issue. I don't, I, there's been a lot of walks down memory lane, but I just have to add a piece of information in response to Mr. Giordano's comments earlier. There have been many opportunities for the village in the past, and I'm not laying any blame on anybody here, to own some of the information that has been given to them, gathered by citizens, before this group now. I myself was a chair of a residence advocacy group in the early 2000s, and people were coming to me saying, do you know what's going on up in Marble Dale with this quarry is filled and people are sick? So, we started getting into it. And I do believe that the very first person, Steve, I think you had just been appointed to the board at the time, that I gave the first publication that we disseminated on this, which was not from any village records, because there were none. It was from DEC and it was from other sources about what was happening in that quarry. At that time, there had been one, a soil remediation done, and it was just the tip of the iceberg. I came here and others came here with a map that was created, with people's names that lived up on the ridge, on Chestnut, on Verde, on some of the other areas up there, whom, who had, who were suffering and had suffered from cancer. And we were not, we couldn't say what it was caused by, but it just, oh, sure, oh, thank you. It just seemed odd and kind of coincidence to us, that with all of this stuff that we knew, now knew was dumped, because of course, we've heard from Joe Marinella, could there be a connection? So, we made a big map, and we brought it here. And it certainly visually looked like a cluster, but what do we know? 10, 12 pins in a concentrated area, the names of the people, so that they could be checked by the village, and that some action could be taken. And none was. So, it is true that none of the present board was around 64 years ago and told Marinella's father to go away. But what is also true is that there has been information given through the years, and it shows that there may be a problem that is not contained simply by having that quarry covered up. And I think that is an important piece of information for you to please consider. If nothing is done on that site, is that also the right thing? Question number four, is that the right thing? Can we look at the people that have gotten sick up on that ridge? We gave it for the record, I don't know if you still have it, I don't remember when it was, it was at least 10 years ago. So, please, make that part of your awareness. And also understand, we're sensitized because of this lack of response from former officials. And everything we hear now, a national discussion about how we really can't trust what we're told, that we, we're looking to you now, to be the visionaries, and to, so that we can know that we can really trust you thoroughly with what's going on up there. Whether there's something done with that site or not, there may be a problem even if, even if it's, everything is left alone. So, please consider that.
And we're gonna look, you think around 10 years ago, 10 or?
Yeah. I'm gonna see if I can, I can retrieve the data.
Okay.
If it will be helpful. There's also, we had people coming from the other side of Marble Dale, between Marble Dale and Waverly, came to the meeting and said, I can't believe that there's not 100 people here. We have breast cancer all over the place, over there. Now, whether it's from the quarry or not, we don't know. They went to the Department of Health, they said they approached the village. They had been subject to those leaks from Friedman Industries, those skids that broke. And they didn't know what it was being caused by, but there was a lot of illness over there too. And they couldn't get anybody's attention. And I'm not speaking for them now, I'm just telling you what happened. I don't know whether any of them are still around, or they want to come forward. If anything happened after that, I'm not aware. But there's sickness all around there. There's also, there's been lupus up there. So, so there, there's more of a problem than perhaps we're being, that's being addressed just with this development question right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Sure.
If I may, just give her a couple of comments. Tammy, thank you for saying that. And that's part of what trustee Giordano was saying, one of the three different options, leave it alone. And is that a real option? Is it a good option? It's something that we're all debating and all understand as well. But there's actually, in full disclosure, there's actually, I think, a fourth option, or something that we should talk about as well. I spoke with Mr. Musso today, and I asked him this question about the superfund site. And the question was, let's hypothetically, because what we're doing is, we're trying to run through all these different hypotheticals, right, to see what might be the best solution. So, let's say the developer leaves the site, decides not to go ahead and do what he wants to do, for whatever reason, and the DEC declares that site a superfund site. We don't believe it is now, but let's assume it is declared a superfund site. My question to Mr. Musso was, what would they do? What would they do? I said, I find it hard to believe that they would do something more than they possibly would agree to a Brownfield site. Meaning, okay, the DEC says it's a superfund site, but they're not gonna take extra measures on something that they would have approved in a Brownfield site. They're not gonna put more money into it than they would if they decide a Brownfield site and a cleanup is appropriate. I also asked, well, if they did whatever remediation, and maybe it's equivalent, but probably not more than that they would approve to a Brownfield site, what precautions? Because there's a lot of precautions that we're talking about, and there's a lot of worry about, once we start digging up, are we gonna expose the air to vapors, et cetera, et cetera? Good questions, logical questions, questions that need to be addressed. But I asked, would they take additional measures that they wouldn't require of the developer? And the answer is no. So, whether or not it's a superfund site, and they clean up everything, which I doubt, or they clean up even less than what the developer would do, we're not sure. But I don't think they're gonna clean up the entire site. Not if they would give this developer a declaration of X, Y, and Z would make this site healthy for the public, for the end use of an industrial site. Mr. Musso, did I get any of that wrong? Maybe I did.
No, no, I think that's, I think that's a good perspective. I, maybe just to add to that, I think at this stage, it would be, it would be highly unusual, I think, for the developer to back out. I know there's a lot of circumstances that could happen, and there's still, he's still to cross the finish line. I mean, let's face it, he's gotta get there. But yeah, I think if, in the circumstance where the DEC would take over this 3.2 acres, you know, I think they would look at it as follows. They would say, you know, what's currently going on at the site now? It's a commercial zoned, I believe, site. It's relatively abandoned. I think the remediation that they would do, probably getting into state superfund for the 3.2 acre, they would have to go through their data review and do their due diligence and rank and score the site. That's how you get on that list officially, on that registry list. But if they do, you know, they might say, well, no one's coming to the table to develop the site. There would be some remediation that would happen. I believe the soil vapor extraction is a big part of this, in order to contain the vapors on the site. Perhaps some sort of capping, fencing, to keep people off of it. But I think, Mr. Alfassi, I think you're correct. If that circumstance did happen, I can't see the DEC being any more protective or require a more extensive remedy. I just don't think that happens. I think they're gonna look at the site in a similar way. I, what I started to go through earlier, when I started, started talking earlier, I went through the elements of the remediation, which I believe will be out there for the BCP site. And, you know, again, I think that's a fairly robust remedy for what the developer wants to do. I think the development, the end game of putting structures on the site is part of what DEC reviews. So, that's a perspective on that. I think you're, I think you're right on that.
Michael.
Thank you.
You know, I respect you. I respect you highly. But do me a favor, and by the way, mayor, whoever is replaying the April 14th meeting, the DEC meeting, thank you. Thank you, and a lot of people, the young couple that just walked out, just bought a home on Bella Vista, and they came to my home, and I welcomed them to the village. But, Michael, please, please, watch the April 14th meeting. You were right there. I was standing right near you. Watch the April 14th meeting. Let me just refresh your memory. Tell me where I'm wrong. Take notes. This is what happened, mayor. The environmental attorney for the developer got up. She made a big speech, a big speech, because she already sold you, your board, and especially the planning board, that that was a municipal dump, not an industrial dump. She kept doing it. And then she also stated, Tom, I'm sure you'll remember this, she also stated, right here, that the developer, through the Brownfield program, would do a better job than the DEC. I swear on my mother that was done. Gradually, George moseyed over to this mic, and he challenged her. And he said, what you just said is not true. So, to answer your question, Steve, yes, yes, the DEC said that if this particular piece of property was not in the Brownfield program now, it would be in the superfund program. Okay? Just so we got it straight, the environmental lawyer lied. George from the DEC, Randy, came up to the mic and told her she misspoke. Do you recall that, Steve? You watched that meeting many times.
I don't recall it, Joe. But what I do recall is what I just said.
Go ahead.
What I just said was, if the site is in a superfund site.
Right.
So, that was the preface to my statement.
And according to-
So, we're not disagreeing.
Okay.
We're not disagreeing.
Wait a minute, we are disagreeing, because the DEC said they would clean the site thoroughly, which means, Steve, to me, they would go back into that Brownfield site and retest it. And they also said if that site was not now, in the Brownfield site, it would be included in the site that's already on record, and Mike's gonna call tomorrow, the North and South piece. And let me tell you something, the South piece of that property, okay, you know, Mr. Mayor, and Tom, and the rest of the board, you know that Westies put a bid in to buy it from a good friend of mine. I went to college with the guy who owns it. And he was willing to sell it. But everything is now on hold, because the DEC is involved with the superfund. Now, if you want verification on that, and David, call up Subaru.
I spoke to the owner of Westies.
Okay. And that's true. Did I lie?
Well, he was in contract to buy that property, and then he actually backed out.
Right. And you know why he backed out? I just told you why he backed out.
Well, if he's a good businessman, he backed out, because they're probably picking up for half what he was probably in contract for.
True. Steve, you're right. But he backed out because it's now on the superfund site. And he didn't want to get involved with the state of New York and the DEC. And he just said, go, forget about it. But we got an opportunity. Because if he wants to build a storage all the way down after that is capped properly and done, I don't think there's a resident up on the ridge that would object to that. But a hotel, five-story hotel? Anyway, I just wanted, Steve, I don't mean to, I don't mean to insult you, but I just wanted you to know that that lawyer was put in her place, and I'm sure you all seen that, okay? A positive view.
So, cap, so capping would be okay with you, just the hotel is not? Is that what you just said?
The hotel is bothersome, yes. Five stories? And my good friend Gary Gertson, he said it was only five and a half feet extension on the height. I don't know why there, people say 60 feet.
But wouldn't, if they build not, nothing on there, nothing's on there, but they go ahead and do the remediation, they do the soil, they take it up, they go ahead and cap- and do the remediation, they do the soil, they take it up, they go ahead and cap it, doing the same basic things that they would with a hotel going up there, or any other structure going up there?
No, no, because if you heard the DEC, he said, once it's capped properly, once they do their capping, first of all, we're not going to, it's not going to cost you or me a dime. It's from the state of New York.
I know that.
But he said, after three or four years down the road, let's talk about whatever we want to see down there. You know, you've got to always remember, Steve, and I hope you go home and remember this, if, if the fathers of this village prohibited Mr. Luciano from building that quarry the way they did, it would be like the quarry that's behind the mayor's house, wouldn't it? Wouldn't it?
I don't know, I didn't live here then.
I know you didn't live here, but I'm telling you, that's what would have happened.
And that would have been nice, Joe.
It would have been beautiful.
But we're living today. We're living today with what we have, and we're doing the best we can to come to a remedy and a reasonable conclusion. I think you agree with that, don't you?
I agree, and I just gave you, I gave you only my opinion, but I'll bet you, if you took Albert's recommendation and put this on a referendum before the last election, you'd be shocked to know how many hundreds and hundreds of people in this village don't believe you should touch that site. Hundreds, take my word for it. You might not know it, but I know it. So what I'm saying is, let the Superfund set in, and you have that right. I checked today, two attorneys told me that you, elected officials, and the mayor, could deem that a hazard problem for the health and welfare of the citizens in this village. And this project is a dead project. And then we'll find out who really owns that piece of property. Maybe it's Mr. Slotnick yet, Mr. Mayor.
I thought he sold it to Bill Wynn Development.
Well, I know the mayor, I know the attorney showed me a, an affidavit he signed, but people have been checking with the county to find out who owns it.
Yeah, when you had said that, I went on the county's website, and there was a deed from Armer Realty into Bill Wynn Development affiliates on 6/27/2014, and that was the deed. So that was the deed into Bill Wynn, Bill Wynn Development affiliates. So they own it.
We have, so Slotnick could still be involved with the other-
I have no idea who Mr., I don't know who Slotnick is, I've heard the name, I don't-
Well, Slotnick was, at, at Mar Realty, they were the original owners that bought the property from the Lucianos.
That was sold to Bill Wynn.
I know. I know.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is John Rabius, I live at 62 Chestnut Street. I want to try and clarify a couple of things. I am.
I am, Joe.
Just not as loud as Joe. And, and the only reason why I mentioned that before is because when you're, and you're not doing it now, but if, the volume is so loud, when this is being replayed, and I want everyone in the public to watch this over the next month, you can't hear it, it's so, you just, it's just, you just can't understand it. So, I understand we're all very passionate about it, but just get your, you know, monotone voice out there, so we can all hear, because I want everybody to hear all these comments.
Okay. I'd like to clarify some of the information that is being dispensed by the board, and your exports, and your experts, and just the fact that it has qualified as a Superfund site. And there is, there is paperwork that declares it a Superfund site. When you, as the board and your expert, refer to it as a brownfield, it kind of minimizes what the site really consists of. And I think the problem with that is, it's creating a sense of complacency in the town for all the people that live here. If you look at it from a, just from a frank standpoint, it's always been there. It's been a whole, if you were here 50-something years ago, the whole neighborhood stunk. But if you weren't, you just know it's, it's a lot where there used to be trucks, and it just sits there, and it's just kind of been there. And no one's really seemed to worry about it. Some people probably have faith that government will take care of it, and, and we've seen in the past in other situations where maybe good intentions, the government did try to take care of things, but we have apparently a chart that the woman that was spoke with, that spoke before, said, had a bunch of dots of people that were sick, and that actually includes some of my family. And, and I'm just, I'd like it, I'd like the designation, just the way it's referred to, as, as a brownfield, it's qualified as a Superfund. You're minimizing the situation, and we've had, and really instilling that sense of complacency in the people here, where they don't really worry about it, because it's always been there. And maybe if they don't live in the area, or immediate, in the immediate area, maybe they don't have family members that have been sickened by this, or lost their lives by it, possibly, we don't know. And like the woman said before, who knows? And the Health Department needs to maybe come in and maybe do a, do a chart like that. As far as the statements you made before about how a private company or entity owns this property, and, you know, they can do what they want, I want to make reference to the site in Bronxville on Kensington that they're, that they're working on. The Village of Bronxville delayed that eight, 10 years to, and insisted that it was, that it was properly dealt with. And that is, that is actually designated a brownfield site. And they trucked all that crap out of there, tons, they must have dug down 50, 60 feet. And they shipped it out to Pennsylvania, and I guess that's their problem now. But the, but the village insisted that that work was done to their, to their satisfaction. And, and you're, Mr. Mayor, you're claiming we don't have any, any control over that, and I don't understand how the village that is a half a mile away from us has control and we don't, or you don't. As far as, as far as the statements that the DEC, that the DEC made in the April meeting, it would, the best remediation for this is to cap it. If you start digging into that, if you've ever been by a construction site, or even these sites, when this is being done, the guy that's controlling the dust is standing there with a hose, and probably his cellphone texting his girlfriend. It's, it's really not, he's really not capturing everything, one. And two, it's not going to do anything about the gases and the vapors that, that will be emitted from there. And if there's all alarms that are going off, it's already too late. The cat's out of the bag. And there's nothing you can do with that. And if that floats down the street, whether it's heavier than air or lighter than air, it's going to float down the street to that park where everybody's playing basketball at this minute, or it rolls up onto that ridge, and it comes in my window, it's already too late. Because when I smell something and I go, wow, what is that stench? I've already been exposed to it. And now it's too late. So when the report comes out in a month or two that something was released, I can't do anything about that. And in a year or two or five years, where I come down with some kind of tumor or respiratory issue, there's nothing I can do about that. And can I say, well, probably while they were working on that quarry? I can't prove it, and I can't sue anyone, and I can't do anything. I just have to go and get my cancer treatments, or whatever it may be. And this really concerns me. Just because I was, in the simplest form, I'm trying to, this discussion was overheard by my stepdaughter and my stepson. And, and I tried to explain it to them the best that I could. And, and in the end, my stepdaughter said, well, if the mayor is, is supposed to be taking care of us, why isn't the mayor protecting us? And I ask you, Mr. Mayor, I, it's, this scares me. This really scares me, what might come up out of this hole. And, and I'm, I'm really confounded by why we need a hotel here also. But why aren't we, why aren't we engaging in a, in a safety-first mentality, rather than, let's see what happens and deal with it later? I, you know, I'm a fireman, actually, in this town, and everything we do is safety first. And this is, this makes no sense to me. And it really concerns me, and I really hope that the common sense will ensue, because it should be capped and left alone. It's a Superfund site, not a brownfield. And you haven't even tested it all yet. We still don't know. There are hotspots that you have not gone to. I have letters, I've read a lot of information, it's all online. And there's a lot of, a lot of garbage in there, and all the testimony, the people that have stood up here tonight in April. I'd really like, I'd really like us to at least put the people and the children that live here now first over this developer. Because if we can, if you could get involved the way the Bronxville mayor did, the Bronxville, Bronxville forced them to comply to certain standards, and we're not doing that here. And I really worry about what may happen after the fact, when the holes are open, when the pilings are beat into the ground, and the vents are set, running, as it was described, the vents are going to be running out of the side of the hotel, because God forbid the hotel doesn't have any of these vapors, and that they're going to be running outside the hotel, probably level with my windows. And, and someone's going to really maintain that? It's really going to be captured? I, I find that hard to believe. I really do. And again, the way we heard all of these things in Flint, in 9/11, the air was supposed to be safe down at the bottom of Manhattan, and countless other situations, I have very little faith in what everyone else is going to do for us. And-
Thank you. I'm going to, actually, I want to ask Mike Musso, Superfund site, BCP site, you know, what should we be calling it?
Well, it, the, the application that this developer made was to the state brownfield program. That's the name of the program. They're eligible to get into that program based on preliminary data, and they stayed in that program. I think all you in this room have a different opinion, and a lot of you have looked at the data directly in different ways. I think that's an interesting point you bring up, about complacency. I think brownfields, when people hear that, it sounds a little more touchy-feely than Superfund, right? There's going to be a development on it. But the data, and the extent of the data, and the proposed development, do meet the criteria to get into that program. And that's, that's the way the state brownfields law is written. So, I mean, that's, that's an interesting point. I've never heard that brought up before, about that. A couple of the things that I wanted to, to mention, John, and good, good points. In Kensington, in Bronxville, that was a brownfields cleanup program site as well. There was petroleum contamination at that site. There was also some S V O C contamination like we have here. They actually had higher levels of VOCs, the volatiles, at that site than we have here. I've looked at that data. I did, did work on behalf of the Village of Bronxville to look at that. The cleanup plan was a little bit different, but I think there's an important distinction. The developer on that project wanted to, at the very end, complete remediation and be able to walk away from the site with no institutional controls, no site monitoring that would be needed. And I guess that would be attractive if you ever wanted to sell the property. They said, someone would ask, I heard this was a DEC site, what, what's the deal here? And you'd say, well, look, voluntarily, he took out more soil and rock in order to meet an unrestricted use in the future. The difference here is that the developer and their remedial plan, they certainly could have gone that route. That would have been very cost prohibitive for them, obviously, to dig out that entire quarry. So there's always going to be restrictions on this property. Those restrictions will limit or restrict the type of access. They will allow the DEC and the DOH to enter the property anytime they want, and then you have this annual certification. The venting systems, as you noted, that's a very good question. There are many systems called subslab depressurization systems that are proposed for the roof of the hotel. That design hasn't been finalized yet. In fact, it needs to go through a county health department permit in order for that to be installed. Data has to be collected to maintain that they're clean within the near field of that vent pipe, so not near any receptors at all. There, there can't be any vapors that are escaping. And that's an unknown. It's possible, worked on a, a site in Scarsdale, where for a couple of years, there was a, a filter needed on top of that. Because the permit, it just wasn't meeting clean standards alone on its discharge until it ran for a little while. That might be the case here. The Westchester County Health Department will permit that, though, on, on that type of system. What else? You mentioned dust controls and gas monitoring, and of course, it's going to be very important. I do note, there will be, all data that's collected will be downloadable. The DEC or the DOH will be running a site, maybe the village does something. The point with the person on the cellphone and with the, with the dust, it really, this community demands that it has to be more intensive than that. And that's part of the kickoff meeting, and hopefully, it's included in the remedial action work plan in the decision document, where those efforts are really laid out in, in no uncertain terms of how dust suppression has to be done, and how the air monitoring has to be collected and processed. There will be real-time sensors, so it's not a downloadable, three days later, oh, we had an exceedance on Tuesday at monitor three. There's got to be something else that's in place with that. So that has to be vetted out before anything is started. I'm not going to say that this site is typical of every site, every contaminated waste site that I've worked on is different, but these controls have worked. And in places where there has been similar community involvement and public participation, there's just a lot more work that needs to be done and planned. And I think your comments tonight, and the comments we've heard in writing before, I think that the DEC and the DOH are very attuned to it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I want to ask you a question. You mentioned the filtering, who maintains that? Say, the hotel, that, that has filters on the roof, who maintains that?
Right. So, if they do need a filter, because that would be an exit point that's venting vapor from underneath the building.
Wait, you said, if it has a filter, it may not have a filter?
It may, it may not need one. It would have to be tested and piloted and permitted to make sure what's coming out of that stack, or that riser pipe. You know, it's essentially like a radon system, which you might be familiar with in homes. And there's actually many homes associated with the old Kings Electronics site, Shiloh Baptist Church as well, that have these systems right now. They're running for other reasons, not for this quarry site, but for other contamination in Tuckahoe. They are maintained by the state in some cases. In this case, they will be developed, or maintained and inspected under the site management plan. So they would require periodic inspections and certifications that they're operating. And John, yes, if there is concentrations where they need a filter, that would have to be maintained, and those filters get exhausted after a while, they have to be changed out after a certain timeframe.
As I understand it, presently, there are, there are vapors that are, well, dangerous vapors that are emitting from the site right now.
No.
No?
No.
I've read data that's, that does state that.
Well, I've, the data that I've looked at was the data that the New York State DEC collected, when they did subslab and indoor air samples along Marble Dale businesses. And I know Rachel's here tonight, so there's, there's letters-
Someone told me that there are dangerous vapors.
That they've gotten.
And that we're still waiting for some results.
Well, the results that I've seen, I haven't seen the final lab data, Rachel, and that's, that might be something that you're waiting on as well. But the DEC, when they, whenever you do an indoor air investigation, like they did, they did subslab, meaning underneath the building slab itself, there were some high levels there. They also tested inside the buildings, and the levels met all health-based standards for full range of volatiles that they tested for. Whenever you do that, in any kind of what's called a vapor intrusion study, you automatically have to take an ambient or background sample. And what you do is, you put the same type of canister out back of a building. What you're interested in seeing is that there is something in outdoor air that's blowing into the building. So it's kind of a background sample outside of the building that you're investigating, and there were concentrations that were detected, but not at health-based levels.
But then that brings up the question about the people in the general area that were sickened over the years. There's got to be a connection to it. It can't be a coincidence.
I, I don't know.
That there are clusters of people that have been sickened. And if you're putting filters in these vents, who maintains them?
Filters will be maintained, like the system to be maintained, under an agreement for site management. So the applicant will be obligated to maintain those into the future.
Property owner?
Yeah.
I used to work in a body shop, and those, those regulations came around 20 years ago, where they had to put filters on the exhaust fans because of VOCs and the paint fumes and all of that. And my, when, after the, the Health Department walked out of the building, they would pull the filters out, because it would bog down the fan. And those filters are expensive. What are, and I would imagine whatever filters are supposed to capture this, these demons that are going to come out of the ground, I bet they're really expensive, too. So now I have to rely- So now I have to rely on whoever is making twelve dollars an hour in the Marriott who is being told by his boss, who's trying to cut costs, take the filters out because this you know, human nature and people lie and people cheat.
John, I can't. I can't comment on that.
Are going to happen. That I promise you. I've been in a lot of body shops and I've seen all the filters slid out.
Well, the difference between your auto body shop is.
It's just it's just a common link. It's the same system. People bypass it.
The difference the difference here is is that every year, there's a a report that's submitted to the D E C that has a professional engineer. It's not the developer that shows up here, but it's somebody that he'd hire that has to certify system operations. When there is a problem, occasionally the fan, which is like a radon fan, the bearings go in it. It's spinning all the time. It's low noise, but it does spin to create a gradient that provides a conduit for underground air, soil gas, to be exited through the top. There may be testing that's involved periodically with it to justify if a filter is needed and as long as it's needed. And, you know, there's that chain of certifications that that take place under a site management plan. So maybe that is a little bit different than the auto body experience when you have, you know, a brownfield site where, you know, somebody is really on the hook to certify the the process. Only comment I have on that.
We're the ones that are going to be on the hook. That's that's the thing. This really worries me. It's really concerns me.
Thank you. Yes, the woman in the back here.
Hi, my name is Dawn Saviano. I've been a resident in Tuckahoe for thirty years. My husband and myself raised our children here. And I think this thing sounds like an abomination. And I'm very fearful for myself, my family, and for all the residents in Tuckahoe. And a lot when I hear you, when I hear you, mayor, and everybody else speaking, it sounds like it's a done deal, that you already know it's a done deal. And I find that very frightening. And this sounds like a Stephen King novel. I should call Stephen King and have him come down here so he can write an excellent novel about the village of Tuckahoe. Okay, and I don't feel like getting cancer because my whole family's died of cancer in their fifties. And I don't feel like getting cancer and I don't feel like having my family getting cancer or anybody else in this village get cancer. Because cancer is around us anyway. And I don't need toxic fumes coming out, right, coming up into my house. And I find it appalling. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Larry Saviano, one Coolidge Street, Tuckahoe. I've been a lifelong resident of Tuckahoe. My family has been in the village since the early twenties. My grandfather actually built the house above the quarry. We lived there. Well, I was born there, so I'm a little concerned because as a person that's grown up in the sixties, one of the things I remember was to always question authority, something people don't do anymore. They don't question authority. We believe the experts or the lawyers, no offense to you gentlemen, okay? But your stock in trade is your language and how you manipulate it. If one of you has to defend a murderer, the other person has to prosecute him. Even though you might know he's guilty, you still have to go through it, that process. Now, as far as the contaminants, I don't care what kind of filter they put on. And I don't care what any environmentalist tells me. The fact is those stacks are going to be eye level at my house and many of my neighbors. Okay, so having lived as long as I have, I have very little faith in government. If you recall out in Colorado, number of months ago, I think it was the EPA, they were digging next to a gold mine. They opened up, I guess, a containment vessel of toxic waste, sent it down the river. That's government. They're supposed to know what they're doing. You don't hear much about it anymore because, of course, they quieted down. The other thing about this project, I'm all for development, but a hotel, not a good idea. We're not in a vacation spot, so I don't know who's going to actually come to the hotel initially. Maybe people go into the casino. Okay, you might have a higher end clientele coming in. But if it turns where they can't make money, is it going to turn into one of those hotels that we see along Tuckahoe Road or in the Bronx where you're going to have drugs, prostitution? You see, I see beyond the approvals tonight. I really don't want to see this happen because I think I'm looking at it more from the health aspect. I have a grandson now. He's going to come over. I'm going to know that those pipes are maybe within two hundred feet. And I don't care what anybody says. They're not living there. They're not breathing that air. We are and everybody around us. Right now, the quarry, it's sealed for the most part. We're going to go there and we're going to open up a balloon. And that's going to come into the atmosphere. Yeah, we're going to have all the all these things in place. But I don't think it's going to be enough. It's not going to be enough to shield us as far as our health goes. And I think we should really look at this. You know, we talk about the internet, the high speed internet. One of the things about living in Tuckahoe, you don't need the internet in Tuckahoe. All you have to do is walk out on the street and you'll get the information you want. Now, you see, the information I already had passed along to me that this was a done deal. See, so in some ways, I'm coming here and I'm, in a sense, wasting my time. But at the same time, I've got to voice my opinion. Because unlike the county government, the federal government and the state government, you have no voice as an individual. But you can come down to this board meeting and our neighbors will listen to us and hopefully do the right thing. And with that, that's about all I can say right now. And hopefully, things will work out in all our favor. And as Mr. Mariani said, I don't see any economic benefit to us with this project as far as that goes. And that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Joe, before you get up, let's just make sure there's nobody else who wants. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Nobody else? Nobody else? Okay, Joe, you're the last speaker. Go ahead.
I just I just want to personally say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Joe. Okay, all right.
I just wanted I just want to personally say that you trustees earned your salaries tonight. You really did. You really, you really truly worked and you listened to the to the people. And I want to thank, believe me when I tell you, my neighbors, John, Larry and Dawn Saviano for coming out tonight. And I also want to thank my adopted son here, John, who's an active fireman in this town. And his mom died at forty years old from cancer, living over that ridge like my beautiful, beautiful family, the DeBello's. Five upper respiratory and cancer. And you might want to know, I hope she doesn't get mad at me being here at this mic. Sheila Clark is a survivor of breast cancer who lived over that ridge. So please go home tonight. Go home and really, really think this out. Make sure you worry about us. Forget the developer because he doesn't sleep in the village of Tuckahoe. Mayor, you know that. He's not from Tuckahoe. So thank you so much. God bless you all, too, for having so much patience, especially with me.
That's quite right, Joe. Thank you. Yes, sir. You're the last speaker for the night. Thank you. Oh, John, I didn't know. I'm sorry. Okay.
I just want to reiterate what my brother said as far as I'm a I'm a lifelong resident also. We've been here since the twenties. I remember as a child going down to that quarry when it was still water. And there were a couple of chemical plants down there and we would play around. I can remember Burrows Welcome dumping piles, piles of pharmaceuticals down there. We would be running over the piles of pills and bottles, not taking them, just playing on top of the piles. But I can remember the smells coming out of there. And even when they started to fill the quarry in, there were these gigantic water bugs that got into the sewer systems. And they started to get into the houses up on the hill on Chestnut, Coolidge Street, Bella Vista. And the village would come up periodically and drop some sort of poisons into the manholes to try to eradicate them. But it would never work. I mean, and they would fly. It was like those big Palmetto bugs you'd see in Florida. They came out of the quarry when they started to fill it in. What I'd like to see, and I'm I'm definitely afraid of that pipe, being the building is going to be roughly sixty feet in height. The pipe's probably going to go up at least another ten to fifteen feet. And to emit those gases that are going to escape from underneath that slab, they're going to pull out so it doesn't get inside of the hotel. We don't know if they're going to have any odors to them. What are they going to do to control that?
I think he can answer that question for.
Well, before he does, because he's long winded.
Oh, no, no, he'll be short winded.
And I want to go home and I'm sure everybody on the board wants to go home. Maybe he can just give me a short answer.
Sure, he will.
All right, a sound bite. But with that said, why can't the village possibly consider going to the state or the federal government, buying the property from the developer at fair market value, remediating everything and keeping it open space and turning it into a park? Or just leaving it as it is instead of having him develop it? Another concern I have, like my brother said, if it's not profitable, this hotel, my fear is that he will turn it into a homeless shelter, being he's already taken money from the county for tax abatements. They will work a deal because you make more money from the county or the state housing people that are in transition. They'll pay four hundred dollars a night for a room where he might only be able to get a hundred and twenty five. So profitability is there for him to turn it into that. Now, what do we do if we get a bad element of people there? How do we control that? My property value goes down with that. And also, if I go to sell it, people ask, what is going on down there? I hear it's some sort of brownfield. Oh, you want this much for your house? We don't want to pay it. Or it's unsellable. What do I do? Is the village going to step up to the plate and find me money and give me fair market value of what it is today versus what it can be after the hotel is built? These are a lot of concerns, Steve, that I have and to the board members. I mean, it could affect our property values. What happens if a person up there just bought his house for seven hundred fifty thousand? You put this property, develop it, this unit, people don't want to live there for fear of cancers and other things. Now it's only worth four hundred if you could sell it. Are you going to reduce my taxes? Is the village going to come in and buy me out? I don't think so. What do I do? Can't even rent it. People say, oh, I'm not going to rent your house if I wanted to rent one side out. You know, you live right next to a toxic landfill. Right now, it's sealed, it's contained, and I feel safer than if you develop it. I understand there's a lot of things in place to, you know, that what you were saying, I haven't come to the other meetings. I've been reading a lot of it. What brought me out here tonight was the fear that if this does go through, I'm in such close proximity. My niece just had a baby. He's a year old. He comes over the house. How is it going to affect him? My father lived up there his whole life. He died at sixty two of cancer. Joe neglected to say that. His sister died at forty. I mean, it can happen. We don't know what we're exposed to. We're exposed to a lot of things every day, even in the food we eat. I mean, it's the chemicals and preservatives are affecting us, you know, but that's about all I have to say. I hope the right decision is made. I hope you guys, you know, soul search this before a decision is made. And if you have the ability to stop this or maybe proposition the state and do something like that, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And let me get your short answer.
Yeah, give me a short answer, please. That's regarding the.
Odors.
Smell the odors coming out of there.
Yeah, the odors from the stack. Those fans are generally, are you familiar with what a radon fan is?
I am, but let me just say this to you. Why do they have to vent the gases? Why can't they if they first of all, how deep are they going with the excavation?
The excavation.
Road, street level, Marble Dale Road.
Well. Maximum, I I believe for the stormwater basins is something on the order of ten feet.
You're talking stormwater, but is this going to be slab on grade, the hotel?
I believe so. I believe it is, yeah. No, no, there will be.
It'll be on piles.
It'll be pile.
They're going to drive piles.
Right.
Then put a slab on that.
Correct.
Or grade beams.
Correct. Grade beams?
What is it, slab on top of the piles?
It's either going to be a slab or grade beam. I haven't seen the actual.
How deep are the piles going?
To the to bedrock, which are going to be.
Bedrock.
Yeah, which is probably about seventy feet.
And how deep did they say they went with those borings to hit the bedrock?
Borings went down to, no, no, they didn't go that deep. There's more wells that are going to be installed that are confirmed into bedrock. So the bottom of the quarry were all overburdened wells. So that that's what's been assessed so far. It's part of the remedy. They're putting deeper wells and also to assess the water into bedrock.
Well, my point is is they're going to put a slab on top of those pilings to support the weight of the structure.
Correct.
Why do that? Why can't they cap it and seal it on top of those pilings? So we don't have to vent gases out and to prevent the gases from coming through the subfloor into the hotel and killing all the people that are staying there at a hundred fifty or two hundred a night instead of killing us?
Well, it's as far.
Let's kill them.
As far as soil, as as far as.
They're just staying a night.
As far as soil vapor control goes, I think you bring up a pretty good point. Belts and suspenders, I've seen designs of vapor barriers on the the positive side of buildings, right? The moisture barriers, where you have a high water table. We don't have a high water table here. That's perhaps something that we could we could look at with the D E C a little bit.
I would suggest that, I mean, if you can seal it and keep it down and prevent that pipe from venting those toxic gases, that would be a good thing. If it costs the developer more, that's not my problem.
No, I understand. Everybody understands that.
He's got deep pockets. We have to live here. If he wants to play in the village, in our sandbox, then he's got to play by our rules. If he doesn't, pack your bags and hit the trail.
We get that. No, we totally get that and.
Oh, I know.
No, no, but I'm curious. I just want to interrupt.
A lot of times, you know, only one proposal is put on the table by the professionals that come to the planning and zoning and the people just take it hook, line and sinker. Okay, yeah, that's a good idea.
No, but I I want to ask.
In fact, while I'm here, if ever an.
Let me before I lose my train of thought here. No, I want to say.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mike, who actually makes the determination? That sounds like it's a an element of the construction and design. Is that something that comes from the D E C and D O H or is that?
Partly, the vapor, the vapor intrusion control will be part of a remedy.
Okay.
So that is absolutely something that they have to control. A common way to do that is by the what I described as the radon systems. Right? There, what John is suggesting here, there might be some other ways to do that by putting membranes on the bottom of the building. As long as the the vapor control is met, that's that's something that maybe could be entertained. I've seen it. I've seen that before.
And one of the things that we've talked about internally is that if a when this recommendation comes down from Albany, Mike is going to be analyzing it. And if we feel if he feels and makes a recommendation to us that there may be something that should be altered or maybe go a little bit above and beyond sort of the issue that you raised here tonight, it's a recommendation that we're going to go ahead and make.
Okay, well, before I lose my train.
Okay, sorry.
Let me throw two things into the ring. If ever a position becomes available for zoning or planning, I would like to put my name in that hat. Secondly, I would like to sit down with you after the meeting. I would like to be privy to the conversations you have with the D E C so we can all sit down together, even though it's not normal. So I can put my opinion in with the D E C. I'm not as smart as you or have the degree you have, but a lot of time, common sense prevails. So if you don't mind, with all due respect.
He has a lot of common sense, too. I've talked to this man, it lanes.
No, I'm just saying.
No, I get it. I understand.
I brought to the attention a member. Only because I brought to the attention a membrane that can seal the ground. And he was like, "Well, that's a pretty good idea." But nobody put that on the table yet until I just said it now. So that's only one idea I have, if we're gonna move forward with the project, which it sounds like we are. What I don't wanna do, and we, there's no way to prevent it, from becoming a homeless shelter. And that scares me, too, just as much as the gas. Have you guys ever thought of that?
Oh, I, it was the first thing I thought of when the hotel was, so I can tell you that-
Transitioning, because you can make a lot of money with that.
Well, look, I think my-
How do you know the developer isn't gonna do that?
Yeah, my concern was, and I asked a lot of people who were in the, um, quite a few people who are in the hotel business. One of the concerns I've had recently is there's a lot of new hotels that are opening up in Yonkers. Um, is there really a demand for these, for all these rooms? And, um, surprisingly, the answer that I've gotten from people who have no financial interest in this particular project is, "Hey, you know what? They would build two hotels in this area." That there is-
They have the new one going in on Tuckahoe Road.
Yep.
They built one down across county.
One of the things apparently that makes it very unique here is, first of all, the anticipation is that the hotel's gonna service Concordia College, Sarah Lawrence College, Lawrence Hospital. Apparently, there's a lot of rooms that are now already being you, or booked, I guess, by these different organizations that I talked about. Having a hotel apparently in a municipality where you can walk from the hotel to a train station and get to New York City makes it a home run. So some of the, um, you know, I've talked to some finance people and they've said, "Look, we would loan money on that project in a second because we know that it has, uh, strong viability in the long term, as long as you have two train stations here."
But remember, right now-
Nothing is guaranteed, I get that.
Marriott brand?
Uh, yeah, Marriott Spring Hill Suites.
Spring Hill Suites. You know, corporate will let you use that name, but if the standards go down, they take a walk. And then it could be a Motel Eight or whatever name they wanna name it. And that's what scares me. And they could turn it into a welfare motel or a homeless shelter. And then we're gonna have problems, big problems.
Thank you.
Thank you. Remember what I said about the hat and the ring?
Got it. Got it.
Just to clarify one thing about what Mike had said about comparing the site in Bronxville to our site in Tuckahoe. Our site was an industrial dump landfill. It really can't compare to what they had in Bronxville because it wasn't, they weren't dumping, uh, chemicals, uh, drugs, whatever else they found into that landfill. The other thing you talk about, capping landfills where it's been used successfully in other areas. Yes, maybe in the Fresh Kills landfill, maybe out in the Meadowlands where it's venting into an atmosphere where there are no residential homes. You see, this is an unusual situation. You've got an industrial site, and you've got residences right above it, okay? And when, if that happens and those pipes are up through the gr, up through the roof, that's a twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year that that, those toxins are gonna be released. And you can't tell me they're gonna be perfectly clean. If that's the case, what we should do now, just, if, we'll get the DEC down, we'll get a couple of people down there, and we'll go to those monitoring wells and we'll hook up a system where they can put some breathing apparatus on them. We'll put tents there, and they can breathe that in, maybe for about six, eight months, every day they'll come, just to make sure it's safe. Maybe we could do something like that, if they're all on board, especially the people up in New York State that are gonna oversee this project. Let them come down, we'll make a manifold system. And everybody gets a mask, like a gas mask. And they can breathe that and see what happens. That'll be the perfect test.
How you doing?
Steve Bosson, I live at forty-six Chestnut Street.
I'm probably one of the closest ones to where this hotel's gonna be built. You know, I'm sitting here today and I'm amazed at what I'm hearing. I really am amazed. This guy here, I don't know anything about any kind of environmental thing, but nobody knew that they could cap it and keep the air from escaping? And that this is new to you?
It's not new to me, no.
Well, how come this wasn't brought up? And those monitors that you talked about when they were digging that are gonna collect data every six, six times a minute?
Could be up to six times a minute, yep.
Are they gonna be there when the hotel's built? On the top of that hotel for the rest of the life? That we gonna live, that we're gonna live there?
No, it wouldn't be.
That's gone.
Nope. But if there are vents on top of that roof, there would be a maintenance plan, inspection plan with it.
But no monitors? No state monitors? It's just gonna be the Marriott or whoever owns the building?
Post, Steve, yes, post-development, that would be the plan on this type of site. Much like there's no monitors there now at the current time. Uh, post-development, after remediation, that would be the plan that there, it wouldn't be monitored long-term.
You know what, you guys could keep putting flowers on all the things and putting the flags up, but if you put this in, you're really doing injustice to this, to this village. You really are. That's all I got to say.
All right, we're gonna, um- Sorry. Um, anybody else on this? If not, we're gonna move on to our order of business tonight. Okay. We're gonna move on to our resolutions. First is Resolution Number One, which is authorizing the Parkview Heights permission to close, I guess it's the Parkview Heights Civic Association, permission to close off Bella Vista Street from Monroe to Verdi for a block party on Saturday, September twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, from eleven AM to eleven PM. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution Number Two, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between the Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester Tuckahoe, Inc., and the Village of Tuckahoe as it relates to a grant of eight thousand dollars for the Tuckahoe Trolley. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Three, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between the Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester Tuckahoe, Inc., and the Village of Tuckahoe as it relates to a grant in the amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars for the Tuckahoe Police Youth Programs, seventy-six hundred dollars, and the Dare Program, twenty-nine hundred dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Four is authorizing the mayor to sign an intermunicipal agreement between the County of Westchester and the Village of Tuckahoe as it relates to the Stop DWI Patrol Data Master Project for a grant not to exceed eighty-four hundred dollars a year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Five, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Roseland Residential LP for Main Street Park improvements. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Six is to declare the below-listed items surplus and to authorize the auction of said motor vehicle and recovered bicycles, a two thousand and twelve Dodge Charger, a Diamond Sorento men's bicycle, and a giant Boulder men's bicycle. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Seven is scheduling a public hearing on a proposed amendment to Section twenty-one dash one nineteen A of the Village Code of the Village of Tuckahoe entitled Parking Permit and Meter Zones, regulating parking permit and meter zones on Midland Place for August eighth, two thousand and sixteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Eight is scheduling a public hearing, scheduling a public hearing on a proposed local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in General Municipal Law, Section three C, for August eighth, two thousand and sixteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Uh, Resolution Number Nine is authorizing the Tuckahoe Housing Authority to hold its Family Day on August thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, between eleven AM and ten PM. The rain date is August fourteenth. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Ten, approving year-end budget modifications for the fiscal year ended May thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Eleven is authorizing closing of the following capital projects and the inter-project transfer of funds to other capital projects or to close those projects out at May thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen. The projects are the Main Street Bridge, the Village Hall Computer upgrades, the Police Village Hall Computer upgrades, the construction of the DPW Building, Circuit Avenue Park Project, and Crestwood Project Phase Three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Twelve is authorizing the closing of the following completed capital projects, the Community Center DPW Generator Project and the Police Vehicle Video Systems Upgrade Project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Thirteen is authorizing the establishment of a capital project at May thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen to fund improvements to the Main Street Park from funds transferred from the General Fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Fourteen is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eighty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And I have one more block party resolution, which will be Resolution Number Fifteen, authorizing the Oak Avenue residents to hold their annual block party on August twentieth from four PM until ten PM. 20 from 4:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. All right, discussion. We've had three hours of discussion tonight, so I think that probably covers it. We're going to now move to our departmental reports of the board, and we're going to start with our Chief of Police, John Costanza, who is in full uniform tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Yes, Mayor, I know it's a little unusual for me to be wearing my uniform, but I thought for what I want to discuss tonight, it'd be most respectful to wear my uniform and have my mourning badge on. I just wanted to, on behalf of every member of the Tuckahoe Police Department collectively, express our sincere sympathy to the members of the Dallas law enforcement community for their loss this past Friday, Thursday. Every member of law enforcement certainly grieves the tragedy that happened there, and, you know, all of us. I'm in this business now thirty-plus, thirty-four-plus years, and every person I've ever come in contact with in law enforcement starts their day trying to do good for people, trying to do the right thing. And we train over and over again, particularly in Tuckahoe, with incident scenario basis-based training. We train with use-of-force simulators on a regular basis, and with all our training and all our good intentions, every single one of us knows there were one use-of-force decision from either being in the national spotlight or worse, being given an inspector's funeral. The decisions that are made by our police officers every single day are split-second, and in that split-second, whatever the outcome, it's going to be judged by people looking at it over and over again over a period of time. And with all this being said, so proud of the performance of law enforcement in general, but in particular the Tuckahoe Police Department, knowing the risk, knowing what they may encounter every single day, go out there, charged to provide safety to our community, to do good for people, to help people, and to do their sworn, what they sworn to do in their oath. I commend every member of the Tuckahoe Police Department. I commend all the members in law enforcement that go out there and do their duty, and I just want to say thank you. I mean, I think there's moments like this where, where me, as the Chief Officer of the Tuckahoe Police Department, just has to say to the other two twenty, the other twenty-two members, thank you, thank you for your service, thank you for what you do every day, thank you for building bridges and partnerships with every member of our community. I want to thank members of our community, who particularly over the last few days have reached out to members of my department and said thank you and acknowledged the hard work and sacrifice that's being done on a regular basis. So with that all being said, I respectfully ask that tonight we end this meeting with a moment of silence for the five officers killed in the line of duty, and I thank you for allowing me to speak on this topic tonight. I have a very happy note to discuss tonight. Working downstairs for a second till last night, tomorrow night will be his last official day of duty, is Sergeant David Bank. David Bank will retire after tomorrow evening, after twenty years of a fantastic career in law enforcement. He started his career with the City of Mount Vernon Police Department, worked there for three years, in 1999 transferred to Tuckahoe. It was a gift to us because he's been a tremendous officer, an outstanding supervisor for the department since the year 2007. He was an original member of our SWAT team. He helped, had significant input in the renovation of our desk. He founded and started our motorcycle unit, did a tremendous amount of research with that. Every single year participated and ran our police memorial service, paying tribute to the deceased members of our department. You all know him as the chef at the TPO dinners. Dave has been an outstanding member of our department. We have nothing but extreme gratitude for his service. It's a good story when somebody can leave after twenty years on their own terms, and he has his retirement well planned, so on behalf of every member of the department, we wish him the very best of luck, and we thank him for his service. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, we all wish, we wish him the best. You know, he's been a great guy, great public servant, and your words, couldn't say it any better, so thank you. I'm glad you did come out tonight, those kind words. Mr. Galuzzi, Johnny Galuzzi?
Good evening. Board Mayor, as you know, this coming Saturday, or maybe the people out there should know, would like to know, that we have our summertime fireworks show. That'll all begin down at Parkway Oval Field at 7:00 p.m. with Showtime Dance Band. They'll be doing a classic mix of music. Jackie DiMaggio also will be appearing, and she'll be doing some current, current music for the children. So we're hitting all ages down there. We have quite a few food vendors this year. We'll have a pizza truck, some ice cream trucks. We'll have a Greek food truck, Mykonos, and of course, sausage and peppers and zeppelins and all that fun and fanfare down at Parkway Oval this Saturday for our summertime fireworks. We also have the honor of presenting Reverend Frank E. Coleman, Jr., who will be also appearing doing our patriotic songs. The fireworks show will go off at around 9:30, Grucci Fireworks. You'll want to be down there, a little, little past nine, to enjoy the festivities leading up to the fireworks, as the countdown's always very special as well. We'd like to thank the town of Eastchester for putting in a great deal of, of work to help us out. A lot of their work goes unseen, but the town of Eastchester's helped a great deal. It's brought to us by the Village of Tuckahoe and the General Sir Pope Foundation, deserves a lot of credit for sponsoring the Grucci Fireworks. So thank you, David Pope and the General Sir Pope Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. I'm sure we're all going to be there, and I'm sure it's going to be ninety-five degrees and very warm. It always seems to be that way. Actually, have you gotten a weather report? What are they talking about?
Ninety-two and ninety.
Oh, are you kidding me?
[laughing]
Oh, well. Camille, anything for you to talk about? Gary?
No.
David? Okay, all right. Our next village board meeting is going to be on August 8. As Mr. Galuzzi talked about, we have our wonderful fireworks show coming up next on July 16, and the ever-popular County Shredder Truck is going to be in the Lake Avenue parking lot on July 30. Is that a Saturday? It's a Saturday, I believe, right? Yep. From 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. That's going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and we always start with your deputy mayor and mine, Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to defer my report for the more important moment of silence that we'll have after this, after this meeting.
Okay. And Trustee Luizzi?
I'll make it short tonight, Mayor. Thank you. Tuckahoe Seniors have a program coming up on Thursday, July 14, where they will be taking a tour of the Barto Bell Mansion, followed by a five-course lunch at the Seashore Restaurant, and that will be taking place this Thursday. They're going to close out the month of July with a potluck picnic, and then the center will be closed for the month of August. They will reopen back in September, on September 6. And on behalf of my colleagues here on the board, I would just like to congratulate the new members of the executive board. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Leo?
Thank you, Mayor. The library has quite a few programs in July and August. The adult programs are as follows. On Tuesday, July 12 and the 26th, there'll be one-on-one training classes from 12 to 2:15 p.m. On Friday, July 15, 1:00 p.m., card making with washi tape. On Wednesday, July 20, 6:30 p.m., meet Arthur Linda Logeman of the Two Family House. And on Wednesday, July 27, at 1:00 p.m., there'll be a film lecture on New York, on film. In August, there'll also be on Friday, August 5, 6:30 p.m., Robin Mueller, Spiritual Medium, will be at the library, oh, I'm sorry, at the Community Center. On Wednesday, August 10, at 6:30 p.m., Truman and the Bomb. On Friday, August 20, uh, I'm sorry, August 12, at 2:00 p.m., Wild Card Book Share. And on Wednesday, August 17, at 11:30 a.m., Tuscan Restaurant Cooking Demonstration. And finally, on Wednesday, August 24, at 6:30 p.m., trivia night and dessert. There'll also be a science special with the New Can Nature Center that'll take place on Monday, July 25, at 4:00 p.m., and it's open to children from ages five to ten years old. Registration is required since space is limited, and that's going to be taking place at the Tuckahoe Public Library. Ready, set, and read. Join the Kids' Summer Reading Game, open to listeners and readers ages birth to eleven years old. Sign up and get prizes, get a prize for every five books you read or listen to. And then I also want to just congratulate the Tuckahoe Library. They won the Family Favorites Top Five in library program for kids, so congratulations to the library. I also want to thank the local VFW in Vito Pinto. They were kind enough to donate a, a flag to the community center, which is, like, sorely needed. And also, I want to thank, I thank Mr. Galuzzi for helping coordinating all of that, and that's my report.
Thank you. Trustee Alfassi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report, and frankly, I've been sitting here debating whether I was going to make a comment on, on what transpired this evening with regards to the site, the site that we've been in question. And I do want to make this comment because I won't be able to sleep tonight if I don't. And that's this. I'll only speak for myself, but there was a comment that was made that we don't take this, you know, we take it all with a grain of salt, and we don't take it to heart, you know, criticism. I do take it to heart. When someone impunes, and I don't, and I don't mean anyone in particular here tonight, and there's been other meetings where this has come up, that I and the members of this board are not looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of our community. That's a terrible insult. I would never do that. I may disagree with you. I may disagree with you vehemently, but I nor anyone on this board would ever do that. And I do take offense to that, if it's implied or said directly. That's all.
Well, thank you, and I agree with you. I think that it's difficult for residents, especially, it was interesting, tonight was the first time that there was a lot of residents who came out who live on Chestnut Coolidge, directly nearby that area, not Eastchester residents or Norrisheau residents. So it was interesting to see, finally, that there was some Tuckahoe people coming out and talking about it. They were very passionate, I get that. I think a lot of their fears are, a lot of mentioned fear, the fear factor, and I think a lot of the fear factor is because of the unknown. I think there is a lot of information that's been put out. I mean, we've all gotten flyers. I was actually appalled at a flyer that was put in the backpacks of kindergarteners at Waverly, and I called the superintendent of schools and expressed my, I was just livid, you know, a flyer with skull and crossbones on it about toxic Tuckahoe. To put that in a five-year-old's backpack and send it home, I, I just, anyway. But, look, I do understand that there's a lot of passion and, you know, people coming, trying to come to terms with understanding what's going on with this whole project. I think there is some element of people not really understanding how much control and authority the, certainly the mayor and the village board has, and actually even the planning board has. You know, they have to recognize that, as I've said over and over, this is private property, and an applicant or property owner can go ahead and make an application, and we're going to see how it goes. It's, I've said all along, and this board is very, very committed to making sure that if a project, and everyone here seemed to say that it was a done deal, I'm not sure exactly what they meant by that, but if a project is approved, and if a developer decides to build a building, and right now he's talking about a hotel, and we believe that if he gets his approval, he will build a hotel. There was discussion, I know, a long time ago as to whether or not is a hotel better than a office building that has, you know, lots of doctors on it, you know, the traffic impact of fifty doctors in a, in a building, a five, four-and-a-half, five-story building on Marble Dell Road, you know, so every particular use generates a different set of circumstances. And a hotel generates its own, an office building generates some, whatever, if you look at the zoning category for that stretch of Marble Dell Road, there's quite a few different options for develop, for building development that the property owner had available to them. So right now, he's talking about a hotel, and I've said over and over that I've asked the DEC this question, I've asked Mr. Musso, and thank you for your patience tonight, by the way. You know, does the DEC and Department of Health look at their, look at this application from a viewpoint of whether it's a hotel or an extension of Westies? And over and over again, they've said, no, they look at it as, they're going to make sure that the property, that their recommendation that is that the property is remediated for the health and welfare of the zoning category, whether it's a hotel or an office building. I think there was a lot of, you know, high energy tonight because some of these residents don't necessarily want, I think some of them even admitted that they're okay with capping the site, they just don't want to see a hotel there. They don't want to see a tall building there. Well, whether it's a five-story hotel or a five-story office building, I think eventually, at some point, that property was most likely going to be developed, whether it's in my parents' lifetime, my lifetime, or my son's lifetime. You know, I doubt very much that any large tract of land in Lower Westchester is going to stay a large tract of land unless it's owned by the municipality and it's a park. Tuckahoe doesn't own it, and it's privately owned, as I've said, so we'll, we'll see where it goes. But getting back to what I was starting to say is that we are charged, I am and the board is charged, with making sure that we do everything possible to make sure that this is done right, and we have hired the best of the best, and we're going to make sure that it's done right. That's what we have to do. The, the cost for this is actually borne, the cost for our consultants. We actually make, the, the planning board puts a stipulation in there that the developer puts money and escrow aside, so I'm not worried about spending all of his money to make sure that we have good oversight on making sure that this is done right. Many people have said that a developer comes in here, doesn't live here, he's going to build a product, and he's going to reap the benefits. Well, that's free enterprise, and I, I get that, but it's our responsibility to make sure that when the project is done, this project or a future project at this site, or any site, that we make sure that it was all done, and we're going to make sure that every i is dotted and every t is crossed. So, you know, one of the members of the public said that we earned our pay tonight, and I think we did, and I think that it's, you know, I've said to my board members, I said, this issue was going, bound to come up at some point. The property was going to be developed, and you know what? It's here, the developer's getting it done, so let's just, you know what, let's pull up our, our boots and let's get the job done. Let's make sure that, you know, we're not going to go ahead and run away from the issue. We're going to take it head-on, and we're going to make sure that if this project is going to follow through, we're going to make sure that we were watching it closely and it's done right. We're not running away from that responsibility that we have. So that's my pledge and commitment to the public, and I'm sure, I have to believe that it's shared by every member of this board here. Anyway, that's just me going, I'm kind of dovetailing onto what you said, Mr. Alfassi. Two things I want to talk about tonight. First, I want to thank the Eastchester Town Board and Sally Veltide, she works for their Parks and Recreation Department, for brand-new bleachers that the town paid for and new basketball equipment in our Main Street Park. Before coming to this meeting tonight, I actually drove, I got stuck at the light, and I was looking at it, and, I mean, just beautiful. There must have been five different games going on there, brand-new bleachers. It's beautiful. So it was really nice, a nice night for them to be out there playing, looked like they had a league going on, and it's wonderful. So I want to thank Supervisor Colavita and his board very much for that donation. And the last thing I want to talk about is something on the finance side. Three years ago, we talk every year about our fund balance, and our fund balance for the village is sort of like your savings account that you have at home. And a village is required to keep a certain amount of money, there's a range, that they're supposed to keep in their savings account, their fund balance. And it's, or I shouldn't say it's a requirement, it's more of a suggestion, but it's really a requirement, the way we look at it. And the purpose of that, of course, is just like you would keep money in the savings account for any kind of rainy day expenditure that you have, you always want to make sure you have some money available to kind of cover costs throughout the year that you need to pay for before other revenue comes in. You know, we receive our tax revenue, property tax revenue twice a year, so we need to make sure that we have a fairly healthy fund balance to cover that interim period when we're waiting to actually get tax revenue in, or maybe sales tax revenue. So it's important that we keep a pretty healthy fund balance. Sometimes it's difficult, especially when we are working on a budget and we're guestimating as to how much revenue we're going to get, and we're hoping that the expenses that we're anticipating don't go any higher than we had. So occasionally, we'll run into a situation where maybe there was a project that ran over budget, or there might have been a revenue line that didn't produce as much revenue, whether it was a, a building department fee or a parking revenue fee or something like that. So going back just three years ago, we had a fund balance of $455,000. And then the year after that, people may remember, we actually had a decrease. We had actually not received as much revenue and actually had a little bit more on the expense side, so it actually ate away at that and brought us down to a fund balance of almost nothing, almost about $5,000. So the state had actually given us a poor rating, they gave us a fiscally-stressed poor score, and it was at that time that we, as a board, this board here, realized that, you know what, we needed to make some changes in our Treasury Department, but most importantly, we needed to bring in some day-to-day management, which is our village administrator. We did that. We put all those systems into place, and I have to tell you that I am just ecstatic that the year after that, our fund balance bumped back up in excess of that original $455,000 to a little over half a million dollars. And I can tell you that right now, since we've just kind of balanced our books, because our business year ends on June 1, that our fund balance is $1,000,000. It has never been that high in the history of the village. So it is a testament to really good number crunching of all our department heads. I think it makes a big difference when we have a village administrator who meets with the department heads on a weekly basis, who monitors the budget, who works with our new Treasury team. These are things that we put in place that has really made the village a very, very healthy organization. So kudos to David. I want to, I just can't thank you enough for all the work you've, I know he's a very modest guy, and he's just going to point it off on somebody else, but you know what, we wouldn't be in this good situation if it wasn't for you. So thank you very much. With that, it's going to bring us to the second opportunity to address the board, since there's nobody here to do that. I'm going to ask if we just stand for a moment of silence for a slain police officer. Thank you. So if there's no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Till next time, Tuckahoe. Have a very good evening.